Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
All right, welcome. Please join me in the Pardon Legion.
To the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with a liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to our June 21st 220 board meeting. I guess we're going to start with my report. We don't have any recognition. So I have a very brief report. And then what I'd like to do after my report is to jump into your report, if that's okay with the board, switch the order a little bit.
That's okay.
Okay. So now where did I put my minutes? I just had a couple of things. One thing, board, as I got an email this week, I'm going to forward to you guys about the change, you know, that ISB withdrew from the National School Board and has joined another one. So I'm going to give you a list of FAQs about that that I received this week. So look for that in your email. Also, Janine, in the superintendent report, Janine asked us for our availability in the upcoming events in August. So if you guys could please fill out that, if you will doc form, that would be good. And then last thing I did just want to recognize that it is Pride Month, and I'd like to acknowledge all of our LGBTQ community here in 220 and express our pride in them, and just share a quick quote from the Dalai Lama, "Love and compassion are necessities, not luxuries. Without them, humanity cannot survive." So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hunt.
Thank you, and good evening. I just want to address a couple of things, you know, district-wide before I jump into my report. Obviously, this past week, Board of Education has received a couple of notifications and feedback from our community regarding book selection and access to a certain title within our school district. I think I want to start at a higher level. There's two, I guess, paths for the Board of Education. When you talk about curriculum and resources to support curriculum, those are things and decisions that are brought to you and recommendations for approval. And if there's an issue or a concern regarding that, a parent has, and it falls under board policy, the uniform complaint procedure. And there's a process that we would undergo to look at that. The process is different for libraries, as it kind of falls under a different statute, a different area, if you will. And there is also a process that we would go through if there was a concern with a book that is found in our library. And that's more of an administrative procedure. It's been in place for a long time here in Barrington 220. It's called Procedure for Reevaluation of Materials. That starts at the Library Media Center review, moves to the school-level review, then goes through the district-level review. So I won't go through that and read that to the board, but I wanted you to know there's kind of two different buckets we're talking about with this. Most recently, specific to the title that has brought up some concern, there was a communication with a group of parents in our middle school that recommended and encouraged that our students read over the summer, thanked the parents for the year, and linked to our middle school reading list, and also attached a document with a couple of award-winning lists, one being the Lincoln Award list. On that list was a book that has drawn a lot of attention. The teacher did point out that parents should look, there's additional adult content, and they should, you know, take that in consideration. To be clear, if you go online or middle school website, this book is not on our middle school reading list. It is also not a book or a title that's in our middle school. It's just an unfortunate situation that occurred, and obviously, we've done our best to rectify that with communication to the parents that received that. The second point of that is this is the kind of the age-appropriateness of the book and where it does fall. The book currently is in Barrington High School Library. After some of the communication that we have received, specific from parents regarding concern over the book, we have initiated the school-level review process. So that team and that process has started, and it will continue going through, and a recommendation eventually would come to the Board of Education in which we would have those conversations. I think, again, it's important to realize that, you know, students generally have First Amendment rights when it comes to access to information, which includes reading books in the school library. You cannot remove books from the library if the reason for removal is to deny access to the ideas that a board disagrees with. And I'm not saying that's the case, I'm just cautioning you as we move through this process. It is important, in all the cases that I've reviewed, that a board sticks to its policy and its procedure regarding these issues. And I would say that this has started, and we will go through that in the next couple of weeks with a recommendation forthcoming to the board. So I wanted to address that with the Board of Education out of the gate and answer any questions that the board may have prior to me moving into the rest of my report.
I'm wondering, so I've seen just some images from the book and snippets, but I don't have a lot of context for this. And so is there a way to, if board members, as you're reviewing the process, to have access so we can read the full text or the drop, just to get an idea of what the community has been talking about?
Yeah, I would say that the copies that we have had first probably should go to committee members that are going to serve and look at this, and as they become available, we can certainly make those available to the board. And, you know, to a good point, looking at something in totality, the message and the content, I think is important when you consider any type of censorship.
I actually, yeah, okay, I think we should stop saying censorship or banning. I don't think that is the issue here. I think it's making sure that we are providing our children with appropriate content at the appropriate age and with the supervision of parents. So I think the narrative's being changed to banning, and that's not what's being proposed here. It's making sure we're keeping our children safe.
Right. And I think the issue that I'm finding, though, is there's not really a generally available grading chart, if you will, for these books, right? So in other words, there's not a system where we can look at books and say, "These are rated G, therefore they exclude certain types of content," versus a separate book that might include certain types of content and therefore it's rated, I don't know, I'm using movie, theater, you know, criteria here, but PG-13, for example. That's not readily available, and that's probably not something, or is it, something that we could potentially consider down the line after this review is completed?
Yeah, I don't know that we would take the initiative to try to grade or rate books. That would be, you know, kind of a task that would be ongoing, and I don't know how you would ever do something like that. I think when you look at age-appropriateness, that's certainly something to look at and consider in this, for sure. But we also want to, you know, be cognizant of the age of our students and the importance of allowing them to access things that they have an interest in, that challenge them. We have courses that are taught at the college level in our high school, and having access to those things, I would say, you know, this is a window out into different perspectives in the world. And there's a lot of books that have adult content that our secondary or high school students certainly have the capacity to process, reflect upon, and, you know, maybe broadens their perspective. I would not say, I'm weighing in on this particular book because there's a process that we need to go to.
Sure.
And it's really important for this board to understand the implications of trying to usurp that process. And again, I'm not suggesting anyone has, but it's in place for a reason, and we need to go through that as the next step.
Is it possible, or does it warrant further analysis to say, will we be able to put in a system where parents then have the ability to select what their children have access to?
I would say we should go through this process first, and if that's the conversation the board wants to have, I want to really think through what are potential implications of that for our students in our school district. And I'm not in a position to respond to those tonight.
And then to be clear, throughout this review process, these books are going to remain on the shelf?
Well, there's six copies, and they're all currently in the hands of adults that are looking at it and will be used by the committee. So I would say they're probably going to be in their hands right now.
Okay.
Can you maybe clarify a little bit more of the review process? So what exactly are they looking for? What things would cause a book to be pulled?
Yeah.
And by pulled, I mean, pulled is probably, again, the wrong word, that's not what I want to use, reviewed. What?
I can, and I will include this in your weekly report, so you have all of this that we, you know, I can go to the criteria of selection, support the district's general education goals, and in support both curriculum and personal needs of our students and faculty, taking into consideration diverse interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, maturity levels, cultures, and extracurricular interests. Encourage appreciation for both informational and recreational reading, viewing, and listing. Include all print, non-print, electronic materials. So there's a long list here, I don't think I'm going to read them all to you, but I will share those with you as well.
So I think, we've looked at this, you know, some of the emails and questions that we've received recently is that there are different categories as far as what concerns are amongst the community. So I think, you know, number one is the question of curriculum. I think number two is the question of what materials are presented in classroom by either teachers or outside speakers that maybe aren't part of the curriculum, but it's a guest speaker, it's a mom who shows up at countryside and reads to the fourth-grade class. There's, you know, there are things that come, you know, are presented to children that aren't necessarily part of their curriculum. And then I think the last issue is, you know, kind of the summer reading list. So I would say, and then, you know, I think the library issue is kind of a separate issue. But, you know, if we could kind of talk about those three things, I think that, you know, number one, and I do think it's important for our community to understand that, you know, Dr. Hunt has come on, he has reviewed the process that the board has used to look at curriculum. One of the maybe seven or eight jobs of a Board of Education is to approve the curriculum. And we have always done it after the fact, which is wrong. It's wrong. And so Dr. Hunt has brought this up, has said, "We're not doing this anymore." So going forward, he's changing that so that any changes in the curriculum are highlighted. They are brought to the board, they are shown to the community, it is an open process, and there is complete transparency. So I think in that regard, and I'm incredibly happy with what you've done, with regard, if I can just skip right to the summer reading list, again, not a lot of consistency, maybe no consistency, as far as what teachers provide to their students. And that needs to be brought in under the district level as well, which Dr. Hunt is taking the initiative to. So I do have a quick question, with regard to those two teachers or whoever that sent out those materials, because I also think it was inappropriate. It is inappropriate for 11- and 12-year-olds to be recommended to read a publication that has, you know, images that are beyond their level. So with regard to that teacher, what was the teacher's responses to this, or how was this communicated to the teachers? Because, you know, I think that's really important in this discussion, too.
Yeah, I think, I don't want to speak for the teacher, the principal spoke directly to the individual involved. Certainly, there was no intent to create a report to parents in this type of situation. There was an attempt to draw the attention that some of this content is more mature. And I think, and again, I don't want to speak for, but my reading of that is a passion to try to help and encourage reading over the summer, right? Would we do this again? I think that's not going to happen.
No.
We have looked at every building and what the expectations are for summer reading, and to your point, some have zero expectation and some have extensive lists of recommendation. That's a problem that we need to fix, and we will commit to fixing it.
Awesome. And then if I could just speak to that last issue that I kind of mentioned a second, which is materials that are brought into the classroom, presented to students that aren't necessarily part of the curriculum. I think, you know, from my perspective, I don't quite know how that works, and I don't know if there is a uniform policy as far as, you know, reviewing when, you know, parents, representatives from certain groups or whatever come in, you know, and even books that teachers are reading to students that aren't necessarily part of the curriculum. I don't know if there's a review, and I think, again, to have a transparent discussion about that, maybe at some future board meeting date, I'm not saying in July, but if we could really make sure to earmark this and discuss it later, I think that it would kind of help to bring down some of the anxiety and the feelings that, you know, parents are feeling, which is if I don't police it, no one is. And who wants to use the word "police" when you're talking about schools? I mean, it should be that, you know, there is oversight, there's direction, there's governance, and that, you know, this comes from a district level, it's not just classroom-dependent. So I would encourage us to have this future discussion about this and really dig into it.
Yeah, and we can do that. Some of the examples you gave are really going to come down to the teacher and the building principal. If you're coming in to present on Career Day and the materials you bring on patent law, I can't think any controversial about patent law.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
If it were something controversial, we'd hope our teachers would interject, intervene, and address it. Larger presentations to, let's say, a full class, a guest speaker coming in, principals go through a process to that and look at those things. But happy to address those things when we get asked, you know, the most immediate concerns.
Dr. Hunt, could the committee, review committee, potentially come back with, you know, a variety of options and not just, "Oh, we're going to make this book available" or "not make it available"? Could they potentially say, "Oh, we'll make it available, but we suggest some kind of label or explicit warning label in terms of graphic content"? Like, just as a hypothetical, are there kind of, or is it just, "We're going to make it available or not make it available"?
I would think it's going to be a pretty, pretty point-blank conversation in terms of response to availability or not. Because I think if you take this conversation, then what does that mean for all books?
For all the books, are we going to label some of them or not?
Exactly.
So really, the choice, but the recommendation will come back, either make it available in the high school library or don't make it available. Okay.
Well, you know, I mean, I will say that, Dr. Hunt, you mentioned that we should be following our school policies, and I agree. I'm a big policy advocate. But I will say that, now, this is in student publications, but there are prohibitions in student publications, both in high school and in elementary, of obscene content, and it's defined in our policy. And we just reviewed this policy, two months ago, in fact. We reviewed this, we passed it. And obscene is described as lewd, impure, indecent, calculated to shock the moral sense of humans by disregard of chastity or modesty, objectionable or offensive to accepted standards of decency. And this is in Policy 7315. And this is prohibited content from distribution at both our high schools and our elementary schools. Now, it falls under the provision of student publications. It falls under the definition of student publications, but I would argue that, you know, student publications, if they are going to be reviewed and for content, to make sure that they fall within these boundaries, then I don't know what the difference is between student publications and publications that are made available. So I would challenge this because, again, we reviewed and passed this very policy on March 1st.
Yeah, and I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't jump into cutting and pasting pieces of policy to apply to other areas, right? I think libraries fall under a totally different realm with this, but there is a process specific to libraries and challenges, and I, again, I think we need to let that play itself out and see where we land, and we bring it back to the board for conversation.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your attention to this. I appreciate your responding to parent emails, and, you know, I do think that when it comes to looking at content in libraries, you know, there are, I mean, let's be clear, there are probably many books in our libraries that none of us, or at least I, I personally do not want read aloud to me, okay? For whatever reason. Maybe they use a derogatory slur, maybe they talk about intimacy, you know, it's difficult to, you know, put all of this in one category, and we know it offends us personally, but I do appreciate that there's a process, and I do appreciate that, you know, there are certain publications that are going to upset parents more than others, especially, you know, in the situation, which, again, Dr. Hunt is remedying, you know, where they're kind of pushed forward to a younger audience. So, anyway, thank you.
Do you want me to complete my report or bring that to you? So two other items tonight with my report. Pete, you can never say you were introduced at a school board meeting after a comment about book study, but I'm very excited tonight that on your personnel report, we are recommending Pete Nadler join our administrative team as the Director of Student Services. Pete, I will tell you, I think Kelly Gault, when I called over, wanted to hang up the phone because he'd be the second administrator that we've asked to come over and join our team. Everyone speaks so highly of you and the work you've done in terms of working with students of special needs, really working with PEG in the department. I think this is going to be an exciting time for our students and our People's Services Department. So like I said, Pete comes from us from Lakesirk High School, most recently serving as Assistant Principal of Student Services. He was also Special Education Coordinator, Special Education Department Chair, has endorsement in Special Education, and really has had a career of leadership in working with students with special needs. So I'm very happy to recommend that we approve Pete Nadler in this position of Director of Student Services later this evening.
Don't let me forget to pause after that.
Yeah, you have to wait till they vote, Pete, and then you have this big speech. Second update in my report tonight is regarding enrollment. You should have a copy of the enrollment sheet in front of you, obviously. This is something that, you know, it continues to be ongoing as we staff up for our next school year. I'm going to draw your attention to a couple of things in terms of potential changes, in additions throughout the district. So if you look at kindergarten numbers in terms of where we're at, we are going to recommend that we add an additional section at Roslin Road. That is really due to North Barrington's numbers. At this point, we're having more students coming into kindergarten, so we'll have to cap and send. Looking at availability and transportation and where those students would have to end up across the district, it makes sense that we add that section to Roslin Road. That allows us, if we have cap and send from lines and potentially from countryside as well, depending on where they live, we have an area for those students to go as we get pretty full in kindergarten. So the good news is enrollment seems to be moving up, but, you know, from a staffing perspective, that's something that we watch. Two other things I'll quickly point out to you, if you look at Roslin, third grade, 26, that is getting towards the top end of our parameters, as well as fifth grade at Rose at 27. We're not recommending any additions at this time, but just bring those to your attention as potential hotspots in terms of maybe a July addition will have to be made based on, you know, and based on the department that, as we work through this, we continue to look at these numbers and stay within the guidance provided by the Board of Education. Any questions on enrollment or staff?
This looks awesome. Where are we with enrollment overall for elementary, are we up, down?
I don't have that total number. My gut would tell you that we are up, but I don't want to be committed to that. So let me run the enrollment report for you, and I'll bring it back to the board.
Just to be clear, Sunny Hill, at each age group, one of them is a Spanish-speaking section and the other is a standard section, is that right? Or am I, that was my memory, that Sunny Hill had a, each section, we have two sections. One is-
Bilingual?
Is that right or not?
I think they're both bilingual.
I think they're both.
Yeah.
Oh, they're both bilingual?
Well, they're not both bilingual. One is strictly bilingual, W-I, one-way emergent, and the other was the structure that we use there, it's a PSYOP model, where if you want to describe it a little bit more, where we use ESL instructional practices, where bilingual can be in that classroom, they use both working with it. But one's strictly bilingual, and then the other one is a PSYOP model.
Don't we have stricter guidelines, though, on the bilingual one in terms of the size of the class?
That was in the past, but working with ISBD and looking at how our school is structured at Sunny Hill, and with the enrollment numbers that have gone down, we were able to work with them to create a structure that's the same as what we have now, but with different parameters because of the instruction that we deliver on a daily basis.
So I think we put this in a week before, but Dr. Burn, correct me if I'm wrong, that criteria that we've operated under is if you have a general ed section, general ed offering within the building that you would have a certain percentage of those students, you know, to make up class sizes. Both of those programs being unique and specialized essentially allows us not to apply that percentage.
Because our PSYOP, which stands for Sheltered Instructional Model, that is technically not a general education classroom, so that guidance does not apply to us.
Let me make those clear.
So we don't have to compare those class sizes to other classes across the district, though? That's, I guess that's what I thought we had to-
We do not.
We do not?
Certainly, it's something we can look at. If there's no other questions there, I believe that concludes my report.
Okay. All right, so next up is public comment. Let me just remind our audience that this is not a public meeting. Please be respectful and kind throughout this board meeting that does occur in public. If the audience is disruptive, I will call a break, during which the board will leave the room, and if the board is committed to the Open Meetings Act, we will not be discussing anything about school business if I do call a break. We value your thoughts and your opinions, and in accordance with Board Policy 2230, we ask you to state your name, your elementary tenancy area, and your relationship to the district before your comments. We'll be limiting you to three minutes today, and we've got the countdown timer ready for you. We will ensure all voices are heard, respected, in accordance with our Board Equity Statement that states that we, quote, "recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community," unquote. Per Board Policy 830, visitors to and conduct on school property, the school district expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property. We commit to addressing issues and not attacking people. We ask the community to do likewise. If someone has represented your views or do not, please do not feel the need to repeat their comments, instead consider standing and showing your support. We ask that these actions do not delay or impede the public comment or the work of the board. As a reminder, the public comment is not a conversation and does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Hunt to follow up and report back to the board. I'm going to call two names at one time because I want to make sure we can get through this as expeditiously as possible, so please do not interrupt while I'm calling the names. First up is Cassandra Olson, and then next will be Nelda Munoz.
Hello, Dr. Hunt, I'm board. My name is Cassie Olson, I'm a Roslin parent. I'm here to address changes made to the fifth-grade Human Growth and Development Unit. There's many parents who are unhappy with the district's decision to start teaching the unit with both sexes in one classroom. My fifth grader just went through the sex ed unit at Roslin. Before the unit, parents were informed about the lesson plans and provided a link to the video that would be shown. I watched the video. It contained valuable information, but some moments were cringey and quite graphic. For example, an animated depiction of male arousal. Does my 11-year-old son need to sit next to a little girl he has a crush on and watch that? Can they wrap their minds around that yet, really? Before the unit began, parents were invited to a Zoom call to address their questions. Parents raised concerns about watching the video in a co-ed setting. They saw value in the content but didn't find it appropriate to be shown in a combined sex setting. These are sensitive and embarrassing subjects for a lot of young students. I emailed Mr. Kirk to address my concerns about mixing the students, especially for the video portion of the lesson. Mr. Kirk told me I could opt my child out of the unit or of the video. Mr. Kirk pointed out in both the Zoom call and the emailed response that he sent me that Roslin was the last school to begin teaching the unit in a mixed setting. The fact that Roslin was the last district school to make this change says to me it isn't a popular decision, and Roslin was in no rush to put boys in- environment. Both Mr. Kirk and Dr. Gill told me I could either have my child view the video in a co-ed group or opt out. I'd also like to know why the district keeps emphasizing that the change to teaching sex ed in a co-ed classroom came after a rep from Lori Children's made a presentation at a curriculum development meeting. If you search gender on Lori's website, it's clear they have a radical agenda that many parents do not support. What hard facts or data did this representative provide that shows you it is beneficial to a majority of these young children, 10 and 11-year-olds, to be exposed to these topics in a co-ed classroom? Additionally, I want to confirm that 220 will not be adopting the radical sex ed that Illinois is trying to shove down our children's throats with SB 818. It's my understanding that since we already have sex ed curriculum in place, we have local control and can stick with our current curriculum. At the last board meeting, State Rep. McLaughlin sent a liaison to confirm our local control. Let's make sure to exercise that control. Thank you.
Hi. Nelda, and I have kids 4th grade and 6th grade. Per 20 U.S. Code 1238, Protection of Pupil Rights. D-220 has violated that right with me in conjunction with Freedom of Information Act. February 15, I filed the FOIA request on my kid's specific class curriculum material. D-220 sent an empty Schoology link. After months of empty promises and emails, come to find out there was no curriculum to give out because no curriculum was approved by district until April 19th, one month before the end of the school year. And still, my FOIA request was not fulfilled. June 3, my child's 6th grade English teacher sends out a summer reading material, including "Gender Queer." Okay? Hopefully, everybody can see this, yeah? 11 years old. Hopefully, you like this, yeah? You guys over there, because you guys make the decisions over there. Okay, 11-year-old.
Disgusting.
All right? Now, from this book, Brother Talking to Sister, So You Never Tasted Yourself, Sister Shows Brother, Vagina Slime. There's words blowjob, gay shit. This is exactly what I would expect a pedophile to behave when approaching a child, to normalize sexual behavior, to abuse them. And this is how I see you. Stop sexualizing our kids. Stop abusing them.
Thank you, Nelda. Margot Zada. After Margot Zada is Sylvia Tooman. I'm not calling the names again, if you guys can hear me, that's ridiculous. Thank you, Margot Zada.
I have three kids in the district this upcoming school year. Many are hesitating, including me, with the enrollment of their kids, which does not look good on the district's part, especially knowing the reason behind parents not enrolling their kids. They do not feel safe. You lost their trust. You said you're not sure what I'm referring to. This was our email conversation with Mr. Hunt, explicit sexual education classes. If you adopt the SB 818, porn will be normalized by schools, and there is no place for that. If parents want to sexualize their kids, let them do it outside of school. This is definitely not the place for it. This is a public place that tenders to educate minors. Anything besides any age-appropriate anatomy is not considered educational anymore on the public school K through 12 level. Books found recently in the middle school and high school that went under the radar since 2019 showed explicit pornographic pictures and descriptions. Who's responsible for having those books there? We have Dr. Barry. You should know that exposure to sexually explicit material may lead a child to normalize and become desensitized to high-risk behaviors. Likelihood of a child becoming a victim of sexual violence, instigating sexual violence against another child, greater involvement in deviant sexual practices such as rape. Mr. Hunt, if our district adopts SB 818, everyone who's working with children and introduces anything that is not age-appropriate will be a sexual predator. Please start thinking rationally. Where is your morals and ethics? Aren't you all parents as well? This is not about gay straight anymore. It's about our kids being kids and taking care of them, allowing them to have a normal, safe childhood, and growing up to be mentally and psychologically responsible adults. Also, I suggest you do a little bit more research. An nudity and porn exposure to minors, those who are okay with it seem to have a problem with themselves and their predictions. This is not normal. Your answer should be a firm no to SB 818, not even a grain of doubt. Thank you.
Okay, I've asked you guys not to delay the meeting. I asked you not to do that. You're delaying the meeting by clapping. You can stand up and show your support. Sylvia Tooman, then Marsha McClary's after that.
Greetings. I'm Sylvia Tooman. I have a 14 and 16-year-old here in the district, and I recently became aware of books available in high school to my kids, which you've discussed. They're titled, "This Book is Gay and Gender Queer." My opposition to these books has nothing to do with their LGBTQ content, but of their pornographic nature. They discuss in detail how two men can pleasure each other, how to give a proper handjob, and a comic book cartoon demonstrating masturbation and oral sex between men. These books have mature content that is considered R-rated and I consider it X-rated, and I would be just as upset if these books with these pornographic images had heterosexual content as well. Perhaps that's in our school library, I don't know. So children's brains have not developed enough psychologically or emotionally to fully interpret this mature only-for-adult content. Research has shown that exposure to pornography can impair a child's developing brain, social interactions, emotional skills, as well as impulse control issues up until their mid-20s. Our school libraries are not public libraries. Schools are supposed to be safe environments for our kids. This pornographic content has no place in our schools. Our younger-than-17-age kids can't go see an R-rated movie on their own, nor should they be allowed to check out these books without parental consent. Why are these books even in our school libraries? Because they're award-winning? Well, they're not age-appropriate, and that's what we need in our schools. And who's responsible for putting these books into our schools so our kids have access to them? Speaking at the high school level, I would like to see a system in place where parental consent is required to check out books that would be considered R-rated, and this needs to be a simple process for a parent to do. We moved to Barrington in 2008 because of its conservative family values and D-220's reputation of academic excellence. I send my It's an extension of in which No parent would willingly send their children to school, knowing that it's not a safe place for them physically, socially, or emotionally. Yet my kids have access to pornography in school. The sexualization of our children needs to stop. We need to preserve their childhood innocence. Please do better than this, D-220, please, because I'm losing trust in you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Marsha, and thank you. Thank you for standing after Marsha. It will be Jerry Ewalt.
Hi, I'm Marsha McClary. I have five children, four of which attend D-220 schools, longtime resident and previous BHS graduate. So I am not aware of any federal state laws requiring D-220 to share what I would call adult content with our students, so this is a completely local decision, which is different than a lot of things we've talked to you guys about the last two years. In these cases, pornography shown to students is, needs to be remedied immediately, in my opinion, and I think the community has shown up and showed you that clearly. And what I did this weekend, I listened to the book, "This Book is Gay," and again, same thing, I don't care if it's heterosexual or gay or whatever. The content in that book, two full chapters, are explicit content, and it should be pulled immediately. Our children have access to this stuff on eBooks. It's completely inappropriate. I'm passing out a packet of information, including the list of the three books that issue, a copy of the page book with explicit content, posts showing that even Facebook crazy removed the censored content, sorry, it censored the book content of another book found at BHS, and we have a fact sheet about harmful effects of pornography, and my two emails asking for resolution to this issue, as well as incorporating age-appropriate content as a core belief in District 220 is something I think we should stand up for. I don't care if the other districts are doing this, I don't care towards the books and materials. We need to show age-appropriate content to our children and stand up for them and protect them from this stuff. And here are some of the harmful effects of this pornography. A 2014 study found increased pornography linked to decreased brain matter. Research shows child or teen's exposure to violent pornography can impair their brain's social interactions and emotional skills. We've doing so much to help with SEL, and then we're going to allow them to see these things freely? And I know most of you have religious beliefs that do not support this. They do not. And that is protecting our diversity initiatives, too, is to allow the parents to decide what content these kids see. We choose every day not to have R-rated movies for our 14-year-olds sometimes because it's not appropriate. I don't care how many awards they've won, it doesn't really matter. And it says by age 10, 32% of children have been exposed to pornography, and the average first exposure of internet pornography is 12, and a lot of that is coming now through the schools and the devices the kids are using through schools. I will pass this out to you so you can see it, but I really appreciate your immediate response to this, and I'm thrilled the community is showing up in this issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Marsha. Jerry? After Jerry will be Tom Eman.
Jerry Ewalt, father of four. I have three in the Barrington 220 School District, and, look, great discussions here, and it's, I can imagine it's got to be very hard for you guys to sit here and go through this, right? I find myself sitting in the seat, my stomach's getting very upset, right? It's hard to sit here and listen to what is being taught to our kids, right? So as a parent and a father, I'm not angry, I'm saddened, right? I'm saddened that we've gotten to this point, that we've allowed this type of stuff to come into the school, instead of allowing the parents to teach their kids, right? So somehow we've got it in our mind that we've given you the right and the ability to teach our kids what should be taught at home. And so that's, that's got to be hard for you to realize we got to this point, but you guys have a decision and opportunity to reverse that, right? To bring that back and put it back in the hands of the parents. So, I just spoke as a father, so now I'm going to speak as a pastor, right? And Sandra, you started off by saying a quote from Dalai Lama that talked about love and kindness, and I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, that's extremely important, all this stuff. So, when I quote from the Bible, I do it in the same way, and I look at all of you because you have the decision in your hands to stop this and reverse this, right? And what Jesus says is that for anyone that causes a child to stumble or sin, it would be better for that person to have a millstone tied around their neck and thrown into the ocean, right? This is how serious God, our Creator, is about what you guys are doing, right? And I'm not saying it's you guys because you're stuck, I shouldn't say that. You guys are in a difficult situation, you're being pushed off from the government and from the state, but you have the ability to stand up and say no, right? If our Creator is telling us that what is happening to our kids is one of the worst form of punishment that you can actually receive, then you have an opportunity to reverse that, and I implore you, right? You will stand before your Creator one day, and you will have to give a count for what you have done, and we need to make sure that we are protecting our kids, and that burden falls on you right now. Thank you.
And then Mick, yes, so?
Thank you. Tom Eman, parent of six in the district, high school, Prairie countryside. Not going to rehash what has all just been discussed. I think Sylvia, Marsha, and Jerry just summarized it really well. You know, I think, obviously, the material being discussed, it's obscene. I mean, by definition, it's obscene, it shouldn't be there, irrespective of the context. That doesn't matter. It's sexually graphic. I think the point was being made that this is R-rated or even NC-17 rated content, and our kids couldn't even go into the movie theater to see this, yet it's available for them to take out and check out in the school. The only thing I want to understand, though, is that I don't even know how it got to this point. So I think, you know, as part of your understanding of the process and evaluating what's going on, I think there really needs to be a root cause to understand how did it even get to this point? How did it get to violating the policies that Angela had mentioned, you know, of obscene material? And really, I think when you get to the end and it's presented to you as part of the libraries' process, I still don't understand the distinction between the two, but you have a choice to ultimately agree or disagree with that. I implore you to pull these books. This is awful, and then I'd also encourage you to either enforce or amend the procedures in place to make sure this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mick? And then Annette Hudson, after Mick.
My name is Michael Gasol, but my friends call me Mick. I am a retired Barrington 220 teacher, but here tonight representing the Illinois Family Institute. IFI is a faith-based organization that is pro-life, pro-marriage, that is, marriage between one man and one woman. I'm also here as someone who cares deeply about the students in this district. A year ago, my life and that of my family was changed forever, when my daughter, who was nine months pregnant, was rushed to the hospital when she didn't feel her baby moving, only to be told that her daughter, my granddaughter, Levin Rose, had died and gone to heaven. As we tried to comprehend God's plan and heal in the weeks that followed, I was told that if I went back to work in August, it would help me, as my job required the greatest concentration, and I would not think so much about the ordeal that we had just faced. I was told that because I was one of the two drivers and teachers at Barrington High School across the street. And as my family needed me, I also saw the need for God, to work for God, and against the radical woke agenda in the state-run schools, and after 13 years, I submitted my resignation and retired, as I cannot go back to the indoctrination of students I was already beginning to see. I resigned to be with my family because I saw what was on the horizon with Comprehensive Sex Ed and Illinois Senate Bill 818, where children as young as kindergartners would be subjected to the filth, the lies, and the mind-altering agenda of this state. You will not find anti-biblical agenda in schools like Classical Consortium Academy here in town, or at their second campus at Winnetka Bible Church. Yes, even parents at the so-called prestigious Nutria District are fed up, like many of you are, with the indoctrination, the filth in state-run schools, nor will you find it at any of the campuses of Pastor Randy Blanz's Families of Faith Academy, who also hopes to start a school here as soon as the building is found. Parents everywhere are saying enough is enough, and their precious children deserve better. What you will not see on the reading list at CCA or Pastor Blanz's school is what's been discussed so often tonight. A book like "Gender Queer," a book that depicts sexually explicit images that Mom Kathy May in Texas said got her sick and disgusted, and it should disgust you, too. If you were to show that book to a child on the street, you would be arrested for disseminating obscene material and accuse of pedophilia. These books should not be in any library in this district. I gave many of you here the scores from both Station and Prairie Middle Schools, and you can see the terrible scores and the money being spent. The district is failing you in so many ways. Parents and grandparents, how can you trust the school board that allows such filth like "Gender Queer" to be given to children? The school board that will not tell you if teachers will be gender-affirming and asking for the right to opt out of Comprehensive Sex Ed that they are offering is not enough. Just having it here shows that they are grooming, and the indoctrination this district is perpetrating on your children, all in the names of acceptance and diversity. How sick.
Thank you, Mick.
I can't hear you. Pass you my time to Nick.
This is
Annette?
She's Annette.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Annette. This is the school board that has student Alyssa Casey The school board that will not tell you if teachers will be gender-affirming and asking for the right to opt out of comprehensive sex ed that they are offering is not enough. Just having it here shows that they are grooming, and the indoctrination this district is perpetrating on your children, all in the names of acceptance and diversity. How sick.
Thank you, Mick. I can't hear you.
This is...
Annette?
She's Annette. Thank you, Annette. This is the school board that has student Alyssa Casey in tears in January over the ridiculous mask mandate. The board who tried to stop Alyssa from completing her speech, saying someone couldn't yield their time to her because they could not accept the truth that Alyssa spoke. As Alyssa cried over the mask mandate and what it was doing to her, and how she was worried about kids in younger grades, I thought of Pastor Randy Blanz's schools, where we got to see the smiles on kids' faces all the time. What the governor and this board did was nothing short of abusive, and the mental anguish it caused is totally heartbreaking. But exiting public schools is not enough unless you have resources for your children. Ladies and gentlemen, and yes, there are only two genders, regardless of your religious background, whether you are a single-parent household or whatever your circumstances are, there are excellent alternatives to public schools. From the principal approach school, which I just toured in Virginia, to microschools like the one starting in Virginia, or homeschool co-ops. And homeschooling is taking off like crazy, as witnessed by the number of people at the Illinois Homeschool Conference that I was just at, at Olivet Nazarian University in Burbane, Illinois. Please see me or call me to find out which one of these is right for your family. Just as I stepped on the break thousands of times to keep my students out of harm's way, I am here because I want to protect the young people from the indoctrination that's taking place. My kids, the kids in this district, my grandkids, all of them, young kids are so impressionable. And I also want parents to know about the resources that are available to have them exit state-run schools. Parents, how would you feel if your 11-year-old child had the keys to a car and was going to drive to McDonald's or Twisted Burger here in town, and a teacher knew and never told you? The results would be catastrophic, wouldn't they? And I'm sure you'd want to know and stop it. Similarly, how disgusting is it that this board may allow a child to tell a teacher they want to change their gender, and you as your parent are not told? You know, if God forbid a school building was ever on fire, I would know all of you would do everything you could to save your children. As Illinois Family Institute's Field Director, the Reverend Caesar LaFleur always says, ladies and gentlemen, the school building's on fire. Save your precious children. They are yours, not your district's. They are robbing children of their innocence. Get them out of public schools now. Thank you.
Margot Dolcine, and then Gina Williams.
Good evening. I'm Gina Williams. I have three kids in D220, in elementary, middle, and soon-to-be high school. I have just two simple questions that I have been asked by several parents in emails. We just haven't received a clear answer to these questions. So number one, we've asked if D220 is a gender-affirming district, meaning that a child is immediately affirmed by the school in their choice of gender expression, and parents or guardians might not be informed of a child's gender identity at school. I would like a clear answer on this policy from D220. If a child tells an adult at school about their preferred gender, that may or may not align with their biological gender, is it district policy to inform and partner with that child's parents? Yes or no, please? Second, parents and guardians have been requesting transparency on the many surveys given to our minor children during the course of the school year. While parents are informed, surveys are coming, and given a choice to opt out, we would like to know what questions are on these surveys. Will D220 provide survey content, context, and survey questions to parents and guardians ahead of time, moving forward? Yes or no, please? An uninformed opt-out is not a solution. We would like to know what questions our children are being asked. Thank you.
Becky Riley, and then Anastasia McChelly. Becky, is Becky still here? And Anastasia's up after Becky.
Want to hear this? Folks, you know me, my name is Becky Riley. I have two kids in the district. Hello, Dr. Hunt, hello, board members. Good to see you. I'm here to talk about the adult content, and just make sure there are no kids in the room. Just quick show of hands, who thinks that the book Gender Queer is appropriate for high school-age kids? Anyone in high school, who thinks it's appropriate for that? Anyone in the room? No? I think we covered that. I think most everyone here tonight is here for the same purpose, to protect our kids. I think that's why we have to address the porn issue in our schools. I'm holding up a graphic display, I'm holding up a picture of something that's in our schools, it's porn, the content. Would you want your kids to see this? And I'm just asking you as board members, any of you at home, would you share this with your children at home, no matter what age, all the way from pre-K up to high school? It's not appropriate, right? No one wants to look at it, it's embarrassing, right? No, of course not. It's not appropriate. If I saw your kid, if you saw your kids viewing this on social media, if you saw them viewing this at home, you know, what would you do? We're talking about porn, right? Porn that is on the shelf in our high school, it's in our library, it's accessible to students without restrictions or parental consent. This particular book of porn titled Gender Queer is illustrated here, has graphic pictorials of boys performing oral sex on each other, has a pictorial image of a $10 bullet vibrator and a kid with vaginal slime on his finger, not to mention a pic of two boys having intercourse. Are you embarrassed? I am. You should be. Are you shamed? You should be. Anyone that allows this should be. Are you angry? I am. I was banned on Facebook for posting these pictures because these pictures, this porn, violates even Facebook's community standards. Yet, it's on the shelf in our high school. These pictures are in the book Gender Queer. Now think about this, I would be arrested for pedophilia if I shared this with anyone on the street. Taxpayers are entitled to know the criteria, names of creators of criteria, and the names of teachers and admin who choose controversial obscene material. Concealment facilitates unethical behavior among teachers and breeds distrust among taxpayers. Transparency fosters trust and accountability. Government schoolteachers who are paid by the public want absolute autonomy and absolute anonymity, and that is why, ladies and gentlemen, we have adults introducing obscene materials and others to your children.
Thanks, Becky.
What becomes increasingly clear is that schools, not unlike District 220, are using your money, your taxpayers' money, to subsidize curricula and activities that undermine many taxpayers' deepest beliefs and morals.
And then Karen Collins, after Anastasia.
Hi, I'm Anastasia. I have two children in the district, ages eight and 10. I'm here again to express my concerns about the inappropriate material and indoctrination in our district. I have mentioned this before in person, I've also emailed, I've been in discussions with a lot of the other parents, both in person and in our private groups. There have been a couple incidents of indoctrination from the DEI level at the fourth grade, which I know you guys are aware of. Ms. Alvarez at Roslin Road, who decided to do a read aloud. And the reason I bring this up is not just because I disagree with it, it's because the process is broken. I appreciate you guys bringing it up and all of the reasons why there is a process, but the process is broken completely. And it needs to either change, but I also believe you have the ability and the power to get these books off the shelf and also change the process. Many of us have FOIA'd the curriculum for different teachers, different grades, and these read-aloud books are not part of the curriculum. So these teachers have autonomy, and there are different teachers in various schools who, in our opinion, are activists, and it's not acceptable. So we obviously have a list of those people who we agree and disagree with, and a lot of that falls under racism. And I know that your DEI has mentioned Ibram Kendi seems to be an idol of his, yet he's an activist and a racist himself. So those books don't belong in our schools either. They glorify criminals and drug addicts. So on the topic of the sexually explicit books in our middle schools and high schools, if you do a simple search in our online library catalog, you will find 25 books, multiple pages worth. So that's hundreds of books on the topic of gender transitioning and sex. If you do a search on vapes, you get three books, three. And all three of those books talk about the dangers of vaping. How many books do you think out of those hundreds on gender change talk about the dangers of it? How many? None. We are upwards in the 95th percentile of children up to age 18 who regret gender reassignment surgery and puberty blockers. But there is no danger book about gender in the library. That's a serious problem. So tell me what you think about that. I know I'm running out of time, but on August 1st, ISB, I guess, is coming out with guidelines on SB 818, and it just seems like this is a cop-out. And coincidentally, it's right before school starts, right? Well, you guys have a choice, and you have to say no to 818. Thank you.
Karen? After Karen is Rosanna.
Hi, my name is Karen Collins, and I have a recent graduate from Barrington High School. I have emailed all of you multiple and many times over the past two years, and I'm usually not a public speaker, as this is my first time coming before and speaking tonight on a subject I feel so passionate about many. So my question to all of you this evening is, where do you stand? I hope you stand with what is best for children. That is why many of you have run to become school board members. As a parent, it is our duty to defend and protect our children. I recently went through the district's book review process, which is not really a process. I was the first process that I went through with the administrator who guided me through it. He had never been through the book process himself, as he stated to me in emails. I have emailed your board last November. Five months later, I've received two replies from two of you. That is extremely disappointing, and what does that tell us as community members? I'm not really sure why my questions haven't been answered, so I'm here tonight to seek some answers, and I hope somebody will give me some written response, as I have requested many times. What is the district's policy and procedures that are in place for parents to restrict access to questionable material? Are there forms, opt-out procedures, request letters? What's in place and where can we find them? Has the board approved any new sexual education standards by the state or national? When will the public be informed on these decisions? Hopefully not the week of school. I understand that all schools are required to teach sex ed, however, the most recent amendments allow for each individual school district to determine whether to teach these topics or not. Where does District 220 stand? Are you going to adopt these recent amendments? The sexualization of school curriculum is not welcomed here. If some of the materials, as stated before, I showed somebody outside in the public, I would be arrested and brought up on charges. Once a child is exposed to sexual content, there is no going backwards. Their brain development is not capable of handling and processing sexual content. So I ask you again, where do you stand? And I will put all of my questions in another email to follow up from tonight, which I hope to get a written response from. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Ben?
Hi, my name is Rosanna Kluusmeier. I have two children in the district, aged nine and 11. My husband and I moved here from the city nine years ago in hope of finding good quality education. I feel like I'm living in the Twilight Zone. I do not know what is going on. Having moved here from the UK and speaking to my family back home, they are shocked. And do you know what they say? Only in America. Schools and school libraries need to be safe environments for students. You have moral and legal obligations to protect our children from this type of exposure. This is not about inclusivity, it's not about gay, straight, any of that. This is porn, no question about it. No one can argue this. And it doesn't just stop here in the school libraries. My biggest concern is, we need to know that teachers are not exposing our children to these beliefs in the classroom during read-alouds. Sexual orientations, political views should not be shared by teachers. Knowing that certain teachers in our district have gone off curriculum to share their feelings and personal beliefs is wrong, and those teachers need to be reprimanded and called out. This needs to never happen again. A process needs to be established, and it needs to be across all schools in our district. As many have said, research shows that a child or teen's exposure to pornography cannot be reversed. Once it's seen, it can never be unseen. And will ever undo the effects or damage caused. This needs to be fixed immediately, there's absolutely no excuse for these types of book recommendations in our schools. Schools need to stop focusing on social issue and group identity achievement, this is where this is coming from, and refocus on what is important, what our schools are intended for, student learning and individual achievement, period. Parents, don't just think this will not affect your child because you know them. This will affect your child, just because this will change society as we know it. This doesn't just stop with our children. Thank you.
Ben, and then Christie Johnson.
Good evening. Ben Kluusmeier, I've got two kids in the district. Appreciate y'all's time. You know, coming out of this, we're two years out of COVID, and I'm at a school board talking about pornography. I don't even know what to do with this. It's, it's, like, Twilight Zone, right? I mean, this is what, this is what we're talking about. The community of Barrington that has so much to offer, such a great history, and we're sitting in here talking about pornography. Because that's what it is. That's exactly what it is. Should we start serving alcohol? Should we start letting the kids smoke in the bathrooms in class? Like, come on, guys. We have lost the plot. And, you know, I sit here tonight and I listen to words like adult content. It's more mature. I saw some of the pictures, but I want to understand the full book and the content. Isn't there really anything else to understand? I mean, there's not, guys. And again, regardless of what side political you sit on, this is pure wrong. This is, this, this just has to go there. You know, and I appreciate policies and procedures, I'm well-versed in those, but, you know, it frankly sounds like a cop-out. My girls are my life, as is my wife. For them to be exposed to that, that's my job. That's my job to explain the birds and the bees, not yours. Your job is to get back and educate them. Get our next generation prepared to continue to have America being the best country in the world, not teaching them about pornography. So, I mean, you guys really got to think about that. But I appreciate your efforts, I appreciate your dedication to the community. All of that is great, this one isn't. So, thanks for your time.
Christie Johnson, and then Rachel.
Hi, I am Christie Johnson, first-time talker, longtime listener. I graduated from Barrington High School. My parents met at Barrington High School. I taught at Roslin Road School. I am a parent of a 22-year-old, 17-year-old, and 14-year-old, and live in the North Barrington area. Want to say I appreciate you recognizing parents' requests for some actions before the meetings start on these books that have been highlighted. However, there are more likely, and maybe, there are more to come. I want to make sure you all understand, just because these few books have come to parents' attention, and they happen to be LGBTQ-focused, by no means does that mean we want them gone for that reason. We want them gone because they're porn, plain and simple. There may be books that represent other communities on the shelves that may also be considered pornography. We just haven't found them yet. I find it crazy that I'm even saying, "We haven't found them yet." We trust you with our kids, and shouldn't have to be questioning if you will protect them or not. We have come off a confusing, upsetting, mentally challenging two years that has been hard on all of us. that has been hard on all of us, especially our children. Did any of you, when you were young, go into your library at school and have access to see and check out pornographic books on the shelf? I'm the result of the education that many of you moved here for, and I certainly never saw anything like these books. So what has changed? Please immediately come up with a better policy and safety standards on this going forward, because this is your job, nobody else's. Others' districts have limited access or removed these books already. I'm also aware that many districts that we align ourselves with have opted out of the SB 818 already. It's time to protect kids' innocence and mental health in our schools, because we all know there are things outside of school that are working to break them down. Our children deserve better than this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Turk, and I've had two boys graduate from VHS and a girl going to VHS in the fall as a freshman. Thank you, Dr. Hunt, for explaining the policies. If I understand it correctly, the books in question are not part of NED 220 curriculum. One thing the last speaker just said that caught my attention, that when she said, "This is your job, nobody else's," I take issue with that. The American Library Association has for decades taken the term parental authority very seriously. Parental authority is the right and the responsibility of parents, and only parents, to restrict materials to make sure it's appropriate for their children, and only their children. You may feel very strongly about a book, but your parental authority ends with your children. Your parental authority does not extend to everyone else's kids. Your parental authority does not extend to other adults. Freedom is the choice for people to decide for themselves how best to raise their children. I might agree with some of the points made here this evening, but I want to decide for myself. I do not appreciate other people deciding to ban books on my behalf. It seems like the policy Angela outlined and the review process Dr. Hunt outlined should be sufficient. I know this is a large group here, and people are very passionate, but I hope the board endeavors to find a way to both protect our students' first amendment rights, our parents' first amendment rights, while also reviewing the material to see if it meets any of the standards for obscene material. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. Thank you all. Thank you for standing. So next up is informational reports. Does anybody have any questions about the FOIA report that was sent this week?
You know, before we move on, can I just make a request? You know, we talked prior, Dr. Hunt, so thank you for kind of prefacing everything before we started going public comment, even into your presentation. And although you put an outline out there, if I could suggest, you know, I think a key thing we need to figure out is, what exactly is pornography? I mean, we're talking about going through a process, and the process is fine, but I think that's the key takeaway here, and the process needs to, you know... Rachel's leaving, but, you know, I agree with what she's saying as far as put this in the hands of the parents. So if a parent wants to have their child exposed to this, that's fine. I mean, nobody's suggesting banning, but if a parent doesn't want their child subjected to it, and I myself don't want my child subjected to any of this, ever, actually, until she's an adult. I don't... I guess my ask of you would be, can we somehow find a way to... A lot of parents have been sent, and I know you said that that's something that we want to look at after this process or this evaluation is done. Can we do it concurrently and figure out, gosh, is there a way we can, you know, have a list? And I know, it's a big ask, but something's got to be done here. I know if this was available, I would be on this list. Because these two books and any other book that has any sexual content at all, whether it's homosexual, heterosexual, other, doesn't matter to me. I don't want my daughter subjected to this before she's 18 years old. That's just plain and simple. And I guess to that, is that something we can commit to doing?
I think I responded earlier, saying it's something certainly we can consider. I just want the time to think through the implications and the operational nature of that as well. So concurrent, sure, yeah, I can have those conversations. I just, I need to work through what are the implications of that decision for the school district, the school board, and, you know, from an operational sense.
Okay, and that's fair. And then, just to get this off our shelves for now, at least, I don't know what the process is, but this book is gay. Can I, myself, ask that this book be reviewed? I know there's a review for Gender Queer, but can we do a review on this book is gay? I don't know what people are...
You're a parent in the district, Steve, so you can fill out the form and...
Okay, so there's a form to fill out.
Yep.
I'm happy to fill that out, just to get it off the shelves so that it makes us go look at it, and our parents can take some time to process it.
You said you don't want to ban books, so...
I don't want to ban books.
Be careful of what you're saying, man. You're just saying it's off the shelf.
What I'm saying, for the time being, so that parents can at least have a chance to respond to this, because these are things that, I mean, you talk about the community showing up. The community showed up today.
Absolutely.
And can I just say that there are thousands of books in this world that are not in our school district for a reason. That does not mean they're banned. That means they're inappropriate for children.
Thank you.
So not...
This is a very slippery slope.
Barry, I don't need you to lecture me on that. I know it's a very... Barry, you would have your 10-year-old read that book.
That's what I'm saying. You're a hero.
I agree with you that we have to be careful.
Go in the library and find many books that people are going to object to. That's all I'm saying.
Dr. Hunt said that we would have this on a future agenda, right? Board, the board is talking, please.
What I said was that we will go through that process. The board will get the information, the recommendation from that committee, and if we want to bring it forward to an agenda, we would do that.
Okay.
So just to be clear, Dr. Hunt, the only book currently under review is Gender Queer? Are there any other books that committee is reviewing right now?
The Lawn Boy was reviewed three months ago.
It was not removed. I received notifications.
It was reviewed. It was reviewed.
Right. You denied it, and it's not acceptable. You denied it, and you can't re-review it for one year. The process is broken.
So out of curiosity, the book was reviewed...
We need to continue the business of the board.
If that book was reviewed, why was it not brought to the board?
It was sent to the board. It was sent to the board.
When we were on here?
Yes.
And when?
I will... Can you please follow up and just give it to us again this week?
I'll resend you what was put in the report.
Okay.
Well, you know, Dr. Hunt, is there a timeframe in which we can review it again? Because I asked you this question. You sent it to me on February 10th, or it was in the February 10th mailer. Can I suggest that we put it on our agenda to discuss in July, then?
I think the policy says one year.
So then we're putting that one year.
I'll have to look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, for... I guess I can make this request when we talk about it on the next agenda, but I personally would like it on the agenda for the next meeting.
And I guess I would like clarification.
Wait, wait, wait. You're not going to review this book by next agenda.
I beg your pardon?
That book will not go through that process by the next meeting.
It's already been through the process, hasn't it? The Lawn Boy.
Which book are you talking about?
The Lawn Boy.
The Lawn Boy has already been through committee.
Right, and the board has a year to...
No.
But we don't. So when you sent us that notice in February, that was our only chance to discuss it as a board?
To bring it to a board agenda, yes.
And that's not what I was informed. I was informed that the board voted on it.
The board is talking.
Yeah, I guess I would like more clarification on how this works. I would assume that any book that was brought under review would be presented to the board and voted on, whether or not, no matter what the advisement was. So...
They had an email saying that was the process, and that's not what happened.
I will share with you the process this week.
We'll share with the public. We need a process.
I think we also clarify, sorry, really fast, that the fifth grade health curriculum is going to be on... We are going to be discussing that further on a future agenda, so don't think that we're ignoring you on that also, please.
Are we still able to talk?
That is...
Public comment is closed. We've got board business to finish. So I'm going to go try to get back to our agenda. Informational reports. Does anybody have any questions?
He wasn't called.
He wasn't called.
His name was on the list.
I called every name on the list.
My name should have been on for Andy Spencer.
Can you please verify, is there Andy on here?
There's not.
There's not. No. We've already closed public comment. So informational reports. Any comments?
Sandra, can I make... Can I request that we just let Andy speak? He's here. He's making a request.
Yes.
Would like to reopen public comment.
I'd like to reopen.
That's fine, he can talk.
Okay. Three minutes, Andy. What is your last name, Andy?
Spencer. I went to Grove Station in Barrington, and I've never seen this since I went to Barrington High School. Grew up my whole life here, and I'm really confused, like everybody else. We voted you to be up here, correct? We voted you for one reason, and that's to protect our kids, to work for us, not for the government, for us. We voted you to help us get our kids where they need to be, and we're talking about porn in these books, and I'm so confused. If you look at what it says on one of these books, "I can't wait to have your cock in my mouth. I'm going to give you the blowjob of your life." This is Gender Queer. If my kids read this, they're going to have anxiety. My kid already suffers from anxiety. It's hard enough for him to concentrate in school and to worry about, to be good in school. We've got to worry about math, reading, science, history. This is lacking. We had COVID for two years. We fought about taking the masks off. There's still COVID, and we only have one person wearing a mask. And there's other people here that fought for masks, and they're not wearing it. COVID's still around. There's always an argument. It's always going against the parents. It's only about the parents and the kids. That's it.
Yes.
Let's not worry about the government. If you stand up, you'll be a better person. I know there's pressure from up there. We know. I mean, if you go around to all schools, they push for the kids, like Zurich won their battle with this situation, I believe, I was told. I've been to several meetings. Gary Rabin is a friend of mine, and he's pushing for us. And he's an important candidate here to be our next governor, and I hope everybody's listening on YouTube or wherever we're doing this to help vote for Gary Rabin to help us, because he's going to make a difference here. We come here every single time, and I've been sitting and keeping my mouth shut every meeting for the last two years. And what I watch is when we speak, I see some of you smirking, rolling your eyes, and it drives me nuts, because if I speak up, and it'll get ugly, and I'll be kicked out of here, because I can't stand disrespect. We value your hard work. I've been here my whole life, and I remember, sixth grade or fifth grade, I had sex ed. It was simple. It was a man and a female. That's how you produce babies. I don't care if students are gay, transgender. That's their choice. I have no problem with that. I have friends that are gay. It's fine. But we're not going to teach our kids to say that's okay and confuse them. They're already confused in life. It's just super simple. It's like two plus two. Man and woman produces kids. We don't need to teach my kid how to hold his penis, or it's okay with another man or two women. It's... Everybody's laughing, because it's disgusting. I wasn't raised like that. I have good beliefs. I work hard. I pay my taxes to get a good school, District 220.
Thank you.
That's why we're here.
Thank you. I'm going to go to board committee reports. Do we have any board committee reports?
The referendum committee met last week. The projects that are supposed to be done at the end of this summer will be done. However, there's some issues with later projects. We currently have a gravel strike in the area, and that's impacting Prairie's parking lot and the big work we're doing at the high school, and it's not yet impacting anything else yet. But if people have driven by Grove, you'll notice the mobiles, if they're not gone, they've been moved and they're ready to go on the trucks. And we're doing finishing touches at the middle school. Everyone keep your eyes and ears open, because we're doing ribbon cuttings in August, and we want to invite everyone to come in and see all the good work that's been done, specifically at the schools that will be finished. So, and again, I've said this before, those parents that are North Barrington, Rose, Lines, and the Early Learning Center, you will be involved in designing plans at the end of the summer, so keep your ears and eyes open, because we want everybody's engagement on that. So that's really it. I think we feel good about what we're doing, but we obviously have these little glitches that are just a little bit beyond our control.
And I think, just to add to that, I think what's mentioned, that there are some options to, you know, get some gravel from other places, but it's pretty expensive, and it might not even fix the timeline. So right now, it's all within... We think it's all remediable to our plans, but just wanted to point that out. That was also in the superintendent's update this week.
Dr. Hunt, is there something on...
It is so hot, right?
I've been in communication with him, and it gets better, and then it takes a step back. He warned me that he had a meeting. How is it? I said, "Ooh, it's on, and it's feeling better." He is now in his meeting. I'm trying to get someone else. My apologies.
Thank you.
It's not your fault.
Any other committee reports?
Policy met, and we were very efficient. I think we were through in 30 minutes, and you'll hear from us later. We'll hear the policies later.
All right. So speaking of policies, next up is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? I will read through everything that's on the consent agenda.
So moved.
While I'm reading through, please make sure to note the revised personnel report, which is one of the items on the agenda. We also have the first reading of board policies with minor updates. Policy 370, policy... Policy 370, succession of authority. Policy 470, resource conservation. Policy 570, religious holidays. Policy 5110, recognition for service. Policy 5140, solicitations by or from staff. Policy 5240, suspension. Policy 670, teaching about religions. Policy 680, teaching about controversial issues. Policy 6140, education of homeless children. Policy 6330, achievement and awards. Policy 7270, administering medicines to students. We also have minutes from June 7th, both open and closed. And we also have the following finance reports. We have the May reports for exception bills, NSLP exception bills, activity accounts, Barrington and K through 8, wage and payroll report, treasurer's report, revenues and expenditures, and June reports for bill lists and NSLP bill list. Before I call the question, just can someone from policy just comment on and remind everyone why we have the boards, these on the consent agenda? There's about eight or nine of them.
Sure. So for these eight or nine policies, these were either only changes that were listed as legal references, just the citations had changed, but nothing substantive within the policy. Alternatively, it was a five-year policy review, and no changes were made to the policies, so they're just continuing forward as is.
Any other comments or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carrom?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes, sorry.
Angela Wilcox? That was everyone.
All right, motion passes. All right, so we've just approved the personnel report, so...
Yay!
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Hunt, thank you, board. Just really excited for the opportunity to come here and help our students, especially ones that need some extra help. So it's, you know, what I've dedicated my life to, and I can't wait to continue that work here. Thank you, guys. Welcome.
All right, let's move to our action items. We have a motion to approve the Framework 220 documents as presented, and we've got a copy in front of us as well. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So I believe the latest copy we have in front of us, we were given either today or yesterday with a few grammatical changes, no content changes to what we were passed to us on Thursday. Are there any questions or comments with what was presented?
Yeah, I would like to propose an amendment just to one portion, and thank you for the grammatical changes, too. I appreciate that. Just under inclusive education, I'd like to propose that we add, for the sake of flow and continuity... So right now, we have embrace and celebrate diversity... So right now, we have embrace and celebrate diversity, refine and build educational systems from pre-kindergarten through post-high school transitions. And I'd like to propose that we add that serve the breadth and depth of our student community. And then in that flowing into ensure all learners have equitable access to high-quality education to achieve their potential. So my proposal is just adding that serve the breadth and depth of our student community. I think that it flows better and it acknowledges that we have a deep and broad community made up of middle-of-the-road learners, you know, students of color, neurodivergent students, students from all over the socioeconomic spectrum. And for me, it helps with the flow and gives a reason why, so.
Erin, did you, did you eliminate and celebrate, too?
No, I mean, I'm okay. I'm, I'm okay keeping. I didn't want to seem, you know, I had it all in front of me. So I don't want to seem too nitpicky. So I'm okay. My initial suggestion was, oh, what if we just said embrace diversity and then move celebrate to the, to the core beliefs and say, you know, celebrate and respect diversity? Because so that we would have celebrate and embrace in both places since they're more dynamic in my, you know, and from my perspective than respect and appreciate. But I'm not super wedded to it, so. And I didn't want to make, you know, 20 amendments. I just wanted to choose one. But, you know, I, I wouldn't be. So my, my initial proposal was, yeah, why don't we just go with embrace diversity and move celebrate to the core belief section? But I am okay leaving it embrace and celebrate diversity.
So to keep this clear, you want to just add to the sentence that ends in the word transition, the words that serve the breadth and depth of our student community?
Yes. I like that. I think it explains it a little clearer and gives it a little more understanding.
Is there anybody that, that does not want to see that? I want to make sure that when we call the, call the vote, we have, we have four people.
Can I, can I make a suggestion as well? Or may I make a suggestion as well?
Sure.
I'm good with what Erin said, as long as everybody else is.
Okay. So I think we've got four people that can support that change. Okay, so you have something else?
Yes, please. On the core beliefs, bullet point two, it says cultivate and maintain strong partnerships with and communication between school and community. I'd like to request that it be between school, parents, and community. Similarly, under learner profile, under the topic of collaborates, it says works productively and meaningfully with. And rather than others, I like to say parents and all stakeholders for a shared purpose.
And then find. Where's the second one you mentioned?
I'm sorry, under collaborates. So rather than having the word others, it should say parents and all stakeholders.
Just to clarify, the, the learner profile is about the skills we want to develop in children. It's not about the behaviors of the school district.
So that's like what you want to see the kids? The kids should be able to collaborate with others.
I see. Okay, then.
But if they could collaborate with their parents, that'd be awesome.
Core beliefs.
I understand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Steve, I agree with you on the, on the one and core beliefs. I think that's a great addition.
All right, then, if that's, if that's the case, it's, it's all similar. Under community partnerships and communication, under the strategic priorities, similar comment. So it should read, or I'm proposing it should read, cultivate and maintain strong partnerships among school district, parents, and community stakeholders.
I like those.
And Dr. Hunt, thank you for the clarification on the learner profile again.
And just to give some background on that, I think that, I think that the group was trying to be condensed words. And the thought was community stakeholders involves, or includes, parents. But I, you know, I defer to the board. We want to call them out specifically.
I just want to make sure we're respectful of those students that might not have parents. So we need to say parents and guardians. If that's what we do in our policy today, too.
That's fair.
So if we're going to add those words, I would think we need to add them.
So would we say school, parents, guardians, and community? Or parents for core beliefs?
Parents slash guardians.
Parents slash guardians. So that would be a change under core beliefs and community partnerships, right? Those two, please?
Yeah. Core beliefs and the community partnerships of the strategic, excuse me, strategic priorities.
I think, I personally think it's covered with community stakeholders. But I guess it's not said that way in the.
I kind of agree with you, Sandra. Sandra, it's, it's a little bit redundant in priorities, but it's not said so in beliefs. So obviously, so clearly.
Do we have four people that want to make those two changes? One, two.
What if we, what if we made the change in core beliefs? And then, because is the inference that community or the implication that community stakeholders includes parents?
Correct.
Is that, Steve, just to ask, that's not specific enough, do you think?
I feel like it's important to call out parents and guardians then, specifically. Because while I do agree on some level that they are part of the community, it's important that we have a direct connection, in my opinion, with parents. Because ultimately.
I agree with you.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's the key connection. I mean.
There's no reason not to. Why, why wouldn't we include parents in this conversation and specifically call them out? But.
So do we have four people that support that?
For both parts?
For both parts?
That's fine.
Just want to make sure that we, we pass this and we go.
Yeah, let's get it going.
Okay, so, so the two people, I think it was Katie and Erin who.
I have one more.
Oh, you've got one more? Okay, sorry.
Sorry, that's.
No, 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 no. We've got to get them all in.
So under the Barrington 220 learner, under exhibits initiative and self-drive to add the word service. So demonstrates commitment and perseverance through practicing leadership, service, personal responsibility, accountability, and goal setting.
That's there.
I like that.
Is that there, buddy?
So we have four for that?
Yeah. I mean, we're encouraging volunteer hours. I think we definitely need the word service somewhere in the framework.
Okay, any more proposed changes? We're all very warm. That's, I think.
Our brains are still working.
Okay, under. So, and you've got one more?
Well, I had, I had two suggestions. So under core beliefs, did we, did we talk about leadership under core beliefs? I saw that we got.
It's under grow students, leadership capacity. About fourth from the bottom.
Perfect, thank you. And then my other one was, so strategic priorities. I think that we're going to get some information later today as far as the, you know, current standing of our, you know, our standardized testing. I think that we're going to realize that there was more learning loss than we initially anticipated. I had brought this up at the last meeting to talk about learning loss as, you know, one of those bullet points for our priorities moving forward to, you know, address that. I read through, I didn't see that it was specifically called out. But I do think that it's really important, especially given, you know, the next presentation that we're going to receive. So I don't have a word smithy way to say that. But I, I do think that this is, you know, something that we should really have at the, the front of our radar right now.
Would you put it under personalized learning?
Yeah, can you look at personalized learning? The foster strong academic?
I don't know. I mean, I would say probably under future readiness is where I would consider it. But I, I do think that, you know, just.
I, I think when we look at this, we're trying to think beyond COVID a little bit. I'm pretty sure a action plan regarding some of the data we're going to have conversations about would, would come out of this. And then I just, I, I look at keeping this more kind of broad, long-term with the action plans underneath it. But if you're going to, if you're going to incorporate anything about learning loss, I'd put it under, I'd put it under personalized learning.
So can you read that one there? Angela, it says foster strong academic and personal success skills? And then maybe the action could be under, underneath that? Does that cover it for you?
Strong academic. Yeah, I guess. Like rec, I don't know, recapture. I can't, I can't make up stuff on the spot right now.
Keep, keep fanning them. I feel it.
I know, right? I'm, now I'm working for you. Yeah, I just, I feel like when we, when we drafted this, I think that we didn't have some of the information that we have now.
Yeah, so I do agree with Dr. Hunt that we don't want to be specifically tied to COVID as we emerge from the pandemic while taking our academics seriously and focusing on learning acceleration. Because that's what all the research is coming, that's coming out is saying is that we need to be able to focus on learning acceleration, being able to use our data to pinpoint where students are at in their progression of learning and move them forward. So I personally feel like it is captured in the challenging experiences along with the learner profile right in the middle of being rigorous academics. Because that is really what we're trying to do is ensure rigorous academic experiences.
What about like increased ranking or something like that? You know, because I think that our ranking is, has taken a little bit of a hit during COVID. Is that?
I mean, it, ranking, it, in terms of what is the measure? I think that would be a conversation the board would have to have because we could look at our local assessments, which assess our curriculum and instruction. We could look at diagnostic assessments. We could look at state assessments. We could look at national assessments. And all of those rankings are different depending on what that assessment is at one point in time. And if we really believe that curriculum is dynamic and fluid and changing to meet the needs of our students and accelerate their learning, I would be hesitant to put a ranking in either the learner profile or the strategic priorities. Because that needle's always going to move. Because the, as you probably know, the NWEA MAP norms changed right when the pandemic happened. And the College Board norms are different than the Illinois State Board of Education norms. So I, I think it's, it's hard because the needle's always changing.
An appropriate conversation of this board, though, as we move into the next phase of this is, what are the anchors we're going to watch? And we monitor to see if what we're doing is making a difference. And having that conversation is appropriate.
Could that be part of an action plan, then, to focus on, you know, if we wanted to create?
What our measurements are.
It could. How are you going to measure success of this plan? That's, that's the next phase.
I will say, personally, I've heard a lot of feedback from community members that honestly, they just want acknowledgement that school closures had an effect on our children, that there was learning loss, that decisions that were made affected this community. And while we want to move past that, I, 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 an apology is the wrong word. I, I think a lot of parents just want acknowledgement that this, these last two years had consequences. And we need to recover from them, so, and get our children past them. So whether or not I hear you, that it not, maybe not be a specific point, maybe to Erin's point, maybe this needs to be vetted out a little bit more when we break this down further and just acknowledge that there are places where we need to maintain makeup. And there are, we need to catch our children back up in a lot of ways.
So I think you are going to see that in the presentation coming up as we focus on our academic and social emotional learning data and taking a look at our data from a different perspective. Because we believe that in addition to looking at our data from a national norm perspective, it's important that we use our local norms so that we can compare Barrington to Barrington. So we're going to be showing you our pre-pandemic local norms and where we're at now and tracking cohorts from second grade through graduation.
I do also, I have, it's not an amendment. I just want to make sure we have some board consensus on this. So the new, the new bullet points develop character by encouraging a learning process for understanding, caring about, and acting on core ethical values. That's number three. So I'm assuming these are values like integrity, fairness. I know there might be an issue with like listing every single one, but that's what we mean, right? When we say ethical values?
Yeah, we, we went around and I think we, we felt like the, starting to list things created a rabbit hole. And I think we were centered in, we leave it. Certainly, those are the.
But those are things we're talking about. Yeah, I just want to make sure the board's in consensus that those are, that those are core ethical values. Like morals, right? Integrity.
Okay, I'm going to go back to Angela. Angela, is there something that you want to change? Or are you good with it becoming an action item? A specific action item?
Well, I just, I, I still would like to specifically address it. I don't know if there's a majority that would like to do this as well. You know, I mean, I just think back to, you know, as we were in the midst of COVID, we specifically set aside a portion of our budget to try to address learning loss by, you know, offering free summer school. Like, we made it a priority. And I feel like it continues to be a priority. It's not just done. It's still, you know, the, the issues still exist. So, you know, that's, that's why I'm kind of stuck on it. And I apologize, I didn't have like good language. It's kind of rare, I usually have some language. But I, I really don't this time. But, you know, when I see some of our, our rankings, you know, slip and, and some of the assumptions that we were taking from the last discussion as far as our, you know, whether there was any learning loss. And now we're seeing that there is. I just want that to be a priority still. You know, I think that's just incredibly important.
If under personalized learning in that, at the start of the second sentence, you put something like. Focus on learning acceleration in order to foster strong academic focus on learning acceleration in order to foster strong academic and personal success skills, and then stop the sentence, and then start the next one, and say ensure experiences are relevant to student interests, passion, strengths, skills, and abilities.
Can you, can you repeat the first part of the question?
Focus on.
Now can you repeat?
Focus on learning acceleration.
Yep.
Focus on learning acceleration to foster strong academic and personal success skills, period. Ensure experiences are relevant to student interests, passions, strengths, skills, and abilities.
So by learning acceleration, we kind of mean like recovery as well as?
Well, learning acceleration, if you phrase it that way, it will stand the test of time, because we always should be focusing on learning acceleration. Right now, it might be taking a deeper dive to figure out how we're going to appropriately diagnose, for lack of a better term, where our students are at related to the pandemic. But in five years.
We're still accelerating.
We're still accelerating learning, but outside of, knock on wood, the pandemic.
Are you good, Angela? Does that help? And is everybody else good?
You know, Sandra, one last question.
Wait, I want to make sure on that, on that change.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
He talks about this last meeting.
I know, I know.
Wasn't the purpose of you to discuss today?
Are you, are you good, Steve?
Not really do, but I thought we were supposed to review it and be prepared to discuss it today, right? Isn't that what it says on the superintendent review?
Yes.
I mean, we were given a lot of changes, changes, so.
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with Angela's change?
Yes.
Yes. Focus on learning acceleration.
Yep, I'll read them all before we take the poll. Is there one more?
Just a question for the board. I'm reading through core beliefs one more time, and I'm looking at the first bullet point. It says creating learning environments where all feel physically and emotionally safe. And I almost feel like that we need to expound upon that, particularly given the public comments that we heard this evening in regards to material content. Can we factor in some sort of notation of age appropriateness, or, you know, I, I don't know, but I can't really think of it either.
I'm going to go back to Dr. Hunt's description from our last meeting. These core beliefs are way up here, right?
Yes.
Agreed. But I think at the same time, it's a core, well, not to, you know, belabor the term here, but a core belief needs to be in alignment with the overall vision that we as, as an entire district and community can stand behind. I can't help but feel that there was a big chunk of our community here today that represent a lot of different parents, in addition to ones that were here, that don't feel safe with some of the things that are.
Like create age-appropriate learning environments?
Yeah. Maybe that's a good way of putting it, thank you, Katie.
Actually, that was my.
Gets vague, then. I mean, defining terms. I, I just think we want, I, I think the idea of the core beliefs is to be broader, and then letting us zoom in when we let Dr. Hunt come up with, you know, how he wants to do those things.
Well, then maybe it's something that goes under strategic priorities, then. If it's, if we want to go further down the funnel.
Yeah.
I mean, health and well-being, foster a safe, secure, age-appropriate supportive environment.
I guess I'd hate to have the issue of today fall into the vision for the future. I feel like, I feel like, and I feel like creating learning environments where we all feel physically and emotionally safe captures exactly what you're talking about.
I, I feel very uncomfortable changing something just based on one meeting, what, what this topic wasn't even on the agenda. So the whole community hasn't even had a chance to respond. We've heard from, I'm not comfortable changing something just on what happened.
Well, I think, take a, take a step back and think about last week, when we presented how many people voiced into this to create and get it to where it was before it even arrived here.
I agree with you, I guess I just don't find age-appropriate controversial.
Yeah, I guess that's where I'm at, too. I think it's just a matter of, you know, solidifying our commitment to, and whether it's a small piece of community or not, I mean, every, every opinion here matters. And if some of our community doesn't feel safe, then I think that's something that we need to consider, even if it's a minority.
And that's captured in the first bullet?
Right.
Well, we could say value social and emotional health and wellness for all students at all ages.
Right, let's hope we feel it.
A little pad bag.
Oh my gosh, is the air on?
Don't get too excited.
Don't, don't jinx it.
We kind of had that in the sentence about.
It stays on.
I mean, I guess if we're going to say value social and emotional health and wellness for all, then perhaps we need to be listening when that should be.
We've kind of got it in the sentence that talks about building education systems from pre-kindergarten through post-high school transition. That kind of encompasses all the ages, and that we want them all to be good.
Where are you, Leah?
I'm in the strategic priorities, the, the one, two, third one, with the sentence about refine and build educational systems from pre-kindergarten through post-high school transition that serve the breadth and depth of our student community.
I answered, you captured it.
If we were to insert age-appropriate, it does seem like it would fit better under strategic priorities somewhere, rather than core beliefs, right?
I think if it's under core beliefs.
Under the.
Because I mean, our priorities should always, I would think that would just be implied.
Where would you put it, Angela?
It said value social and emotional health and wellness for all students at all ages.
All students at all ages?
I agree, because we are a unit district, and we have, we, as we keep reminding each other, and that means different things to elementary schools, and middle schools, and high schools, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Sorry, what?
All students at all ages.
Value social and emotional health and wellness for all students at all ages.
I'm okay with that.
I get that.
Okay. I'm going to read through all the changes that I heard, and I need, I believe it was Erin and Katie, to motion. You are? Okay, thank you. So to core beliefs, under the second bullet, it would read cultivate and maintain strong partnerships and communication between school, parents, guardians, and community. On the last bullet, under core beliefs, it would read value social and emotional health and wellness for all students at all ages. Thank you. Then, under the student learner profile, under exhibits initiative and self-drive, it would change to read, demonstrates commitment and perseverance through practicing leadership, service, personal responsibility, accountability, and goal setting. And then a couple more changes under the priorities. Under personalized learning, the second sentence would start with focus on learning acceleration to foster strong academic and personal success skills, period. Next sentence, ensure experiences are relevant to student interests, passion, strengths, skills, and abilities. And then, under community partnerships and communication.
Wait, inclusive education, please.
No, I didn't write that one in, sorry. Under include, I got it. Under inclusive education, the sentence that ends with transition would have tagged onto it that serve the breadth and depth of our student community. And then, under community partnerships and communication, cultivate and maintain strong partnerships among school district, parents, guardians, and community stakeholders through connection, collaboration, and transparent communication. You got it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, roll call.
Oh wait, do we need to?
Oh, you guys have to agree. Sorry.
I agree.
I agree.
We agree!
We agree.
Thank you for helping me on this hot evening.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Next action item is around the paper bit. Do we have a motion to approve the paper bit as presented?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I would just say that we're seeing a dramatic increase in price, and availability is also down, so we're asking the board to approve this. We've also started to have conversations about how we can conserve, reduce, if you will, our paper throughout the district, so we'll continue those conversations and move that forward when building principles return.
And this isn't anything we can get through like a state kind of contract, like some of those other things where we get much cheaper?
It is a state. Is it a state?
We can get it through the state contract, however, right now they're limiting each order to 80 cases, I think it is. Additionally, part of the audit is requesting delivery at certain times, going to certain buildings, and the state contract, now they're coming back.
Great question. Any more comments or questions?
You know, Dr. Hunt, we did talk about this in the finance committee, and I agree that it would be a good move to work with building leadership to, to discuss how we can minimize cost. I think another thing that might be of value is, you know, just considering, you know, can we partner with other districts? Something that we do in the private sector, I don't know if that's an option for us in this, but I'd like to at least propose it and, you know, certainly approve it. But for context, I mean, when I look at this, you know, we're talking about more than doubling the price in a matter of a year, which is, which is very hard, which is very hard to swallow, in my opinion. So as things continue, we need to think outside the box, in my opinion.
Comments or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
I actually ask on this, not to change my vote, how does a place like Station go through no paper for two fiscal years? How's that possible?
It was a storage issue, is what we talked about, like at the finance committee, that some schools use it all up, and during COVID it was different, and some schools have a place to store it, and some don't. And so there's a little bit of unevenness between the buildings about how much papers being, like the delivery thing that we were just listening to, that, you know, some have enough space to keep it longer, so, and they just run out when the order came. It's not like all in the same cycle, because I asked the same thing.
So Station.
Probably used it all.
Probably used just as much. Everybody's spare.
Similar, yeah.
All right, I think the motion carried, I think we got to seven, right?
Yes.
Okay. Next, do we have a motion to approve the agricultural education grant as presented?
So, second.
Okay, and please note that that grant itself was added, I believe, earlier today. Any comments or questions?
Just a $10,000 grant, a $10,000 grant over two years, and it's incentive funding to integrate new agricultural education programs. So looking forward to using that, working in that regard.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? There are none, let's do roll call.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Okay, let's move to our discussion items. The first reading of board policies.
Craig's not here, oh my god.
Craig is.
Steve, I was going to step up, I was like.
Policy orientation.
It's totally up to you. I mean.
It's a big moment for Steve, don't.
Don't take it from him.
I gotta get these policies right.
You didn't practice in 95-degree heat, though.
Well, you know what, the air conditioning was off in my office at four o'clock, and I was there until about 6:30, so I'm all set.
You don't feel it?
This is cool. So it's five policies that need a little, little extra look here today. The first one specifically is policy 2:230, public participation at school board meetings and petitions to the Board of Education. So this is basically our governance of the public comment, and there, I think there are two main pieces that came out of that revision. There's some, some verbiage that's revised, but there was also a question. And the question was specifically asked us if we wanted to make some adjustments to our current public comment policy, to be able to shorten the length, but the committee thought that our policy was, was working quite well, and that we should continue as, as been policy and procedure for the past several board meetings. Did I capture that, please?
I think the question was, do you want to limit the, the total duration of public comment? And the suggestion was 60 minutes. We said that the way that public comment has been working so far gives the board president the ability to limit the individual's amount of time in order to kind of, you know, condense the, the amount of time of public comment. We agreed that it seems to be working well, and to put time limitations on it, you know, I think it, it has a, a certain, you know, it sends a certain message to the, the community that we don't want to send, you know, meaning like we, we don't want to hear from the community, we do. So we thought that by adding that limitation, it would potentially bolster any sort of feelings of distrust or things like that. So we kept that as is. You can see there are a couple of other comments. And, and also includes in the policy that the board president will maintain order and decorum for all. One thing that came out of our discussion was some of the procedures, and I don't think that any of us are in the right headspace to talk about this tonight, because it's stupid, but we were just trying to come up with ways to like move public comment along, and we wondered if the board really likes hearing the elementary area that people attend, or if that's that important, especially when, you know, people either have graduates from Barrington High School, or they attended Barrington High School, you know, or, or maybe they have high schoolers, and whether it, it kind of, you know, gets into, I have six kids, and one goes to Station, and one goes to Grove, and one goes to Prairie, you know. That was just something that we threw out there, but again, I don't really know that we need to discuss that now, and it's not included.
Not even in the policy.
Yeah, it's not in the policy, it's part of the procedure. But, you know, maybe something that we can talk about at the board retreat or whatever. You know, it's not that important, but just as we were looking at it.
What I read is an elementary tenancy or relationship to the district.
Right.
So, either or. But I can change that to say what schools or something?
I, I, I mean, maybe just leave it. I, we just were like, I don't know, maybe it's something to talk about.
Will you guys think about that? Talk about it during our workshop.
And we thought, I think current, our current procedure is that, I think it's every, up to 50 people. Oh, sorry, 20 people, three minutes, and then if there's more than 20, then two minutes each. And I think we.
Publish.
Right. I think we, we liked that that allowed everybody who wanted to speak a chance to speak without cutting folks off. We thought the 60 was kind of stringent to be, so. Agreed, that that seemed to be going well.
Ready for the next policy?
Please.
So the next policy is five, colon, eighty.
Everybody's good? I just want to make sure.
So that has to do with jury duty, and this is actually, gets our policy in alignment with our contracts. So our contracts actually pay all of our stakeholders and administrators for jury duty time. So this policy would now reflect what our contracts say. So district pays for attendance at jury duty. Questions about that? So policy number three is 6:290. It's a homework policy, and this just reaffirms our current policy of allowing students to make up missing assignments when they have a valid cause. There is procedure in all of the student handbooks that outlines what a valid cause is and what the procedures are for making up those missing assignments. So it's just in alignment with our current policy, or procedures, rather. And then, colon, seven, colon, 15, student and family privacy rights. So this was an update on the five-year review. There's a specific question that we need to do, coming from the committee, do a little bit more research on whether or not our browser history is saved by the district. So basically Angela asked the question, can we just get an idea of what is actually being saved and being shared with secondary app developers? Like Apple, for instance, was the main one that Angela brought up, to make sure that we've got a good gate or fence between our data, our students' data, and that company, so that it's not being used or utilized without our knowledge, and if it is, address it. So, I capture your thoughts on that?
There's also the section about surveys, though, which people have asked about. And it's very clearly, you know, students' parents may inspect the survey evaluation, refuse to allow their child to participate in the survey, so, I mean, I hope we're following this. So, you know, parents have access to the surveys before their kids can.
Right.
That's the policy.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Want me to speak to that? Because I actually asked for access to a survey recently, and you are given limited information. I think this is probably a topic for another time, because I could go on on this. I do have an issue with the fact that our first response to parents when they don't agree with something and our curriculum is opt-out rather than working with them. So I hope that that's something we can talk about further down the line.
And you're going to give back to us with the info about, okay.
I appreciate you checking about privacy of our students' information, that's important.
It's an important thing, and that is probably a frontrunner, is a frontrunner in terms of other districts, in terms of trying to make sure we've been trying to stay ahead of all of that for safety and for privacy, so. So, and then finally, we have policy seven, colon, 285. That has to do with food allergy management programs. And essentially what this is, is an update of the policy to really match our procedures, anyway. That we do the things, or have been doing, the things that the state requires of us for, for many, many years, having a plan for a student, communicating that plan. We do professionally develop, we do professionally develop all of our staff members, everybody in the district, every year on anaphylaxia and food allergies and such. So we've, we've been on the cutting edge of this for, for as long as I can remember. Our nurses take this very serious, communicate it with our staff members, and make sure that there is a plan of action in case a student is stung by a bee. There's another piece in there that talks about EpiPens and having EpiPens available. We've, we've had EpiPens available in all of our schools for as long as I can remember. And I remember sitting in the, the auditorium with all of our staff several times, actually practicing, giving EpiPen shots. I happen to have a couple in my cabinet at home for myself, so I've had that experience in the past, but it is something that I've been very seriously thought about and reviewed over the years to make sure we're following good procedures and keeping kids as safe as possible with that.
Just have a silly question on this one. What changed? Was it just references?
It gets, it gets more specific, so the. So the earlier policy was pretty vague. This gets into very specific. You must have this in there, but those were pieces that we had as part of our procedure already.
Is it a brand new policy?
Looks like a new policy.
It's got a new name to it. So it's got a new name. And then there's some specifics that have changed underneath of it. So I can walk through that with you if you'd like to know.
So we already had a procedure, by getting this right, we had a procedure on this, but now it's become policy.
So within the policy, this is the old policy. The new policy has a new name.
Titles updated, yep.
Titles updated. They added a new section to kind of define what the new terms are. And then essentially, they went through and procedurally talked about many of the things that I just laid out. Having a plan for food allergies, making sure that staff are trained. They say that you're supposed to be trained every other year. We train it annually as part of our beginning of the school year. So maintaining a supply of epinephrine pens. We do that in all of our school districts. And then, you know, setting up guidelines. There's a revision for that for schools and for nurses. Sharing that with the student body and parents. So for instance, if you walk into the cafeteria lines, they call out allergens right within the lines so that they're aware of those within the high school. And the other schools, there's things that are limited. We don't want to have them in the building to try to avoid that. Latex balloons are a very visible one, that there's a prohibition on that because of some allergies within the districts to those allergies or those components. And then also it talks about providing annual notice to parents about this and students that, so that they're aware of that. It's actually done through our student handbooks and school bell on an annual basis. And then it also asks for the school board to do a three-year review rather than a five-year review of this policy. So there's just a few of the highlight add-ons to that policy. But with the exception of maybe the three-year review, it's something that we're, within the school district, in compliance with, we have been for several years.
Are we okay with all these moving forward for second reading? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is academic achievement and SEL update.
Hi, everybody. It's cooling off in here. Okay, thank you so much for having us back here tonight. So as you might recall, we presented to you in the fall our state assessment data as well as our local data. In the winter, we came back and shared with you our winter math and FastBridge assessment data. And now we're back again to wrap up the year, sharing our map assessment data, which is administered to students in second through eighth grade, our FastBridge data that's administered in kindergarten and first. And then lastly, Jordan will walk us through our social-emotional learning data from the ECRAS survey. And first, I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Hunt, which will talk a little bit about the perspective we're sharing with you tonight as it relates to our data.
Thank you. So this evening, we're going to share data in a little different manner as we present it to the Board of Education. And in talking with our team, we certainly value and appreciate the district's performance as it relates to national norms. We also want to look at how we compare to, you know, Barrington compared to Barrington. So how have our students done over time? And what does their growth look like as you consider things? And so tonight's presentation, we're going to look at, you know, that data from a variety of perspectives and include a comparison to pre-pandemic. I would, I guess, caution you to put too much weight into a direct correlation between, for example, 19 and where we're at this spring. Because there's a lot of factors that go into this. And the pandemic is certainly one of those. But also time of assessment, when it was given, the environment, what was going on at that time and day. So that's why when we start to look at this data, we're going to start looking at it over time. And we've also talked about trying to make sure that the environment and testing windows are consistent. So as we move forward, we can continue to make, you know, update you and make those comparisons as we see appropriate. Just a reminder, we didn't test in the spring of 1920 and 2021. And if you, you know, if you look at concern or you see things that you're concerned, I think, you know, Ben can go much deeper in this than I. But on average, our students, you know, continue to grow above four to seven points a year, which is significant growth as we move forward. The other thing to keep in mind is the standard deviation of three is there as well as you're taking this data in. So we're sharing it in a little different manner. Appreciate the feedback that you might have in terms of, is this helpful for you as you gauge the academic success and achievement of our students? And as we kind of present to you the results from the spring. So I'll turn it over to you.
Before I let Ben start, I would like to take a moment and thank Ben and Jordan and the entire teaching and learning team who have put a tremendous amount of hard work and effort into developing this presentation to share with you all tonight.
Thanks. So I'm going to start off talking about FastBridge. During the year, students in primary grades are assessed three times with FastBridge assessments. At different points in the year, different indicators of early literacy are emphasized to match instructional priorities. So in the fall, the focus is more on basic skills, things like concepts about print, letter names, and letter sounds. Whereas in the spring, the focus is more on real reading, reading sight words or reading connected text. The scores are combined to provide an overall score in early reading. And we can see from the data up here that our students demonstrate substantial growth from fall to spring. When we compare our student scores to national norms, we see that our students are above the national average. When we compare our student scores to those from before the pandemic, we're seeing similar results in kindergarten, but slightly lower performance in first grade. Similar to reading, students are also assessed with FastBridge and math. Like reading, at different points of the year, we use different indicators that are emphasized to match the instructional priorities. For example, in the fall, we're focusing on basic skills, things like identifying numbers, matching quantities, and sequencing. Whereas in the spring, the focus is more on concepts like place value, automaticity, and calculation, solving story problems. So like the reading results, our average scores are above the national average. When we compare our student scores to those from prior to the pandemic, kindergarten, again, looks very similar to what we've seen in the past. But our average scores are slightly lower than our historical data in first grade. In second through eighth grade, we assess students with measures of academic progress, also known as a MAP test. It's a computer adaptive test that measures reading and math achievement. During the course of the year, we see growth over time, though the amount of growth tends to decelerate as students get older. So as expected, students in Barrington outperform the pre-pandemic national average. But we do see a drop in average scores relative to the pre-pandemic performance in Barrington. This difference in our current scores with our expected scores increases with grade level. So you can see a bigger difference at the middle school level than at the elementary. We've been meeting with principals and school staff to disaggregate the data and make plans for curriculum, instruction, and professional development. So looking at this picture, we see the average scores for cohorts of students over time. The purpose of this slide is to track the progress of groups of students as they move from one grade to the next. If you track down the diagonal, you can see the scores consistently increase from the end of one year to the end of the next. So we're going to start off by looking at the performance of students who are 2022, 23 seniors at Barrington High School when they were in second grade. So in second grade, the average score for that group was 197. And the spring of third grade increased to 208 and then to 216 and finally in fifth grade to 222. So tracking those scores from just second to fifth grade, you can see that there are bigger differences in the scores between second and third grade than there are between fourth and fifth grade. And then when we move on to the middle school level, we look at the next three scores, 226, 227, and 232. You can see that deceleration and the trend very clearly. The decrease in the year-to-year difference in middle school scores has to do with changes in the complexity of the content that's assessed. We expect this, and these scores are strong. This can serve as a benchmark for us when we look at other cohorts. So now we can look at the average scores for the 2021, 22, eighth grade cohort. From second through fifth grade, we see the scores 197, 208, 213, and 219. And that pattern is very similar to the pattern that we've seen in the past. We don't have spring data for the 1920 school year or the 2021 school year in spring, which is why that's left blank. The average student scores in this year, in 2122 school year, was 226, which is seven points higher than the last spring score we had for these students when everyone tested in fifth grade. So looking at these data, we've highlighted the cohorts that we'll be monitoring with MAP and PSAT in coming years. Here's what we see. The initial cohort scores are slightly lower than what we expect in Barrington 2020. Student scores are consistently increasing over time. And as expected, we see more growth at the elementary level than at the middle school level. Overall, the rate of increase for our cohorts is between four and seven points per year. That's across the entire time that we're looking. And we're looking for ways to continue to accelerate learning. Like reading, during the year, we see growth in mathematics over time. Growth in math from fall to spring is a little bit more pronounced than what we see in reading. Again, the amount of growth tends to decelerate somewhat as students get older and content becomes more complex. Again, as expected, Barrington students outperform the pre-pandemic national average. We see a drop in the average scores relative to pre-pandemic performance of students in Barrington. Again, the difference of our current scores with our expected scores increases with the grade level. And that's been a topic of discussion with principals and staff as we make plans for our curriculum, instruction, and professional development. Like with reading, looking at this picture, we see the average scores for cohorts of students over time. Tracking down on the diagonal, we can see the scores consistently increase from the end of one year to the end of next, with one exception I'll talk about in a second. Again, the scores vary. There's often a drop in scores from fifth grade to sixth grade. And that has to do with the switch of the test, from the 2-5 test to the 6-plus test. But we see more pronounced growth at the elementary level than middle school. With the reading data, we saw how to focus on an individual cohort. So in this slide, we've moved forward just including the cohorts we discussed with reading. Zeroing in on our current cohorts, we see that, again, the initial cohort scores are slightly lower than we expect in Barrington 2020. The scores are consistently increasing over time. The rate of increase we see, again, is between four and seven points per year. Barrington 2020 has always had higher standards than other districts around the country. The rate of increase we're seeing in math scores is slightly lower than what we'd like to see. And we're looking for ways to continue to accelerate learning to meet higher standards we have in Barrington 2020.
And now Jordan will walk us through the social-emotional learning data.
Thank you. So in 2005, the Illinois State Board of Education adopted SEL or Social Emotional Learning Standards. ISB defines SEL as the process through which children and adults acquire knowledge, attitudes, and skills needed to master five specific competencies. Those competencies, as defined by ISB, are to recognize and manage emotions, demonstrate care and concern for others, establish positive relationships, make responsible decisions, and handle challenging situations constructively. This year, we administered ECRAS Social and Emotional Learning Survey in the fall and in the spring. This is given to students in grades two through 12. It's designed to measure the domains of SEL standards that are aligned with CASL, which is the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning. These core competencies are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Of course, we all know as a country, we are always working hard and focusing a great deal on mental health issues. But it's really important to make the distinction that social-emotional learning and mental health are not the same thing. However, we know that strong social-emotional learning mitigates mental health risks, which is the ultimate goal. This SEL survey that we administered, again, online to students in grades two through 12, reports in three domains specifically. Those domains are responsible decision-making, self-regulation, and social relationships. When completing the survey, students are asked to agree or disagree with certain statements. Some of those examples of statements are, I understand that important decisions should be made in a thoughtful way. Or I know when I am doing my best work in school. Or if someone helps me out, I express appreciation. In looking at the spring data, our student ratings are relatively stable. An average rating indicates that students agree or strongly agree with the statements given. With that said, SEL is a very general topic, so we should talk about what that means here in Barrington. So as you can see on your screen with the graph and the information with the competencies on my left, most students, 72%, tended to agree with the statements they were given. And 19% of our students indicated that they strongly agree with most of the statements. That means that 91%, excuse me, of our students agree or strongly agree with the statements made. 9% of our students then indicate that they disagree with statements provided. When students indicate a disagreement with most statements, that is a sign to our staff that we need to see if these students need any additional social-emotional support. Disagreeing with statements on a survey certainly does not automatically indicate a need, but it does tell our staff that it's time to check in and see what we need to do and what we need to provide. We are going to give this ECRAS survey again in the fall at the start of the school year. And we will use that to determine supports needed for specific students and groups of students and continue to develop our plan in implementing embedded social-emotional learning into the school day.
To wrap up, moving forward, we will have continued supports in place for both students and our staff to ensure that we, as a district, are focused on learning acceleration. These things include, but are not limited to, using data to inform our instruction, the continued use of diagnostic tools to identify any learning needs present, providing additional time for small group instruction in the core areas, aligned assessments, targeted professional learning for both teachers and administrators, and an overall focus on tier-one instruction. Additionally, we are in the process of working with the Illinois MTSS network to ensure that our MTSS processes and procedures are aligned as well as consistent across the district. And with Jordan transitioning to her role as Director of Learning Services, we look forward to enhancing our strong continuum of services for both students and staff. And lastly, the Illinois Report Card data is scheduled to be released at the end of October. So we will be back with you in November to share our state assessment data.
Thank you, that was a lot. Any comments or questions? I think mostly a lot because of the heat.
I think it's five degrees cooler. I feel a little bit more comfortable. I have a question for you around how we track the assessment scores. And I want to be careful because I don't want to overemphasize numbers and test scores. But I do get asked a lot by parents and community members. But I do get asked a lot by parents and community members, like, "How do we compare to other high-performing districts?" I don't think there's less surprise that Barrington students score better nationally. But I think they're often asking, like, "How are we compared with, you know, like Naperville or Lake Forest?"
I think we'd be careful, from our reference districts.
Right, reference districts. So my question is, do we track that data and do we have access to that? So if people are asking, we can point them somewhere or give them some kind of comparison.
That's a great question, and that's where the difference between a local assessment and a diagnostic assessment is different than a state assessment. So we can use our state assessments very easily, and that's something that we can do for you in the fall when the first release of the Illinois Report Card comes out, because that looks at assessments such as the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, the Illinois Science Assessment, as well as the SAT. And those are assessments that we can look at in comparison to our comparable districts. But not each district uses the same local assessment. So we use MAP, but another district might use I-Ready or the STAR Assessment. So we would have to first look at which of our comparable districts use MAP to begin with, and then we would have to reach out directly to them, and they would have to willingly share their data with us. And so that's, it can be a bit tricky because it's not housed in any state system.
We have to go to each district and say, "Hey, can we share data? See how we're all doing?"
Yeah, so that's definitely something that we could do with state assessments, but it becomes more difficult with the local assessments because everybody is using a different assessment.
In the fall, that will be available. Is that something we can think about doing because of the questions that we get asked from community members?
I believe that's been done in the past in the school district. It's something we look at from the state tests. The diagnostic tests, you know, that data should be and is driving necessary interventions, driving necessary instructional, so it's active data that is making change kind of on the move. To me, that's really meaningful data. And I always describe the state assessment like an autopsy. Like, everything's done, they take it on one given day, and we get the results, and the kids are a year out, you know, some are out in a new grade level by the time we get the information. Doesn't mean it's not important, doesn't mean we can't do some comparisons and draw some conclusions, but it's not going to help the classroom teacher, the point of instruction in that moment. That's what the diagnostic does. So you'd have to find-
So this is more helpful.
Yeah, from a teaching and learning standpoint, for sure.
Thank you. First of all, thank you. On the survey, how about how many, or how many students took the survey? Do you know?
The SEL survey? Ben, do you have that percentage of?
We have that information, I don't have it here with me.
Do you impress the percentage?
Most of the-
We could pull that information.
Yeah, I can pull the information. I don't want to give you a quote because I don't want to be inaccurate, but most students took the test, took the survey, rather.
So I will say, this is one that I actually reached out to find more information on what it was before, and I guess this is maybe a sidebar conversation. I do think it's helpful, perhaps along, because this was, I think, an important survey that perhaps before surveys, when we say we're having a survey, maybe includes some of the questions that are going to be on there or a little synopsis of what the survey is. Because I think, to your point, this is a great way to capture children who maybe need a little extra help or, so I thought these were great results, but, and I think this is an important survey. So I hope that the percentages are high, and maybe in the future, we can explain a little bit more about what these can entail.
We can definitely review the messages that are sent out to parents and revise those accordingly.
On the national comparisons, I understand, if I heard correctly, that these are pre-pandemic numbers, so 2019 school year before, is that correct?
2018, 2019 was pre-pandemic.
Okay. And remind me, when do we expect the national comparison to be updated?
Well, the national norms were just revised during the pandemic, so the NWEA MAP re-norms every five years.
How long does it take every five years?
Prior to the pandemic. So the 2020 norms were released actually in 2019, and it's based on data from 2015 to 2018, from fall of 2015 to spring of 2018. And so they'll probably, we'll see what they do. Typically, it's every five years, as Melissa said. But we'll see with the pandemic if they do something sooner or not.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I really appreciate the Barrington-to-Barrington comparison. I think that the last presentation that we had, you know, was, you know, looking at national averages, which is not necessarily indicative of learning loss, which this clearly targets that and explains what's going on. You know, I mean, I think that, I applaud you for providing transparent, honest information. You know, sometimes this isn't always great news, and this isn't great news. It's not great news. But, you know, I'm glad that we are addressing this head-on. And, you know, I'm excited to see what the plan is. I know that when I was on the board, I don't remember, four or five years ago, and station had numbers that weren't as anticipated. And I saw our district completely change on a dime and really address those learning issues. And then the next year, we saw significant increases. So I am very optimistic that the same attention and detail will be put into all of these areas as well. You know, interestingly, and I guess this isn't really a discussion point, but when I first started looking at it, you know, I look at the scores in second grade or third grade or fourth grade or fifth grade, and they tend to, you know, over the years, they've declined. But when you look at eighth grade, it typically is, you know, we're getting the same result. So it's interesting how I assume that our curriculum is changing its focus as far as more rigor, starting in grade five through eight than in grades one through four, and you're seeing the same, you know, type of outcome. I hope that that can get even better as time goes on. But, you know, again, I think that this is what a lot of us anticipated is the reality. And I am so glad that you actually, you know, provided this. With regard to the district-to-district comparison, I know that we have like our typical comparative districts for salary and compensation, but we also look at unit districts as well. So I assume that we'll do that with the state report cards. You know, I don't know other people's feelings with regard to reaching out to asking for MAP information, but I think that there's certain, because at least in our district, we use that as such an indicator for access to certain programs and, I mean, in combination with IQ tests and things like that. I do think that parents probably would like to see comparative analysis with other, you know, comparable districts, just to, you know, kind of determine the level of instruction they feel like, you know, we are kind of churning out and how our kids are doing as a result of these kind of localized tests. Because I do think that a lot of the districts, at least right near us, use MAPs. I know that maybe as you get closer to North Shore, there's not quite as much usage, but I would at least like to see that comparative analysis. When, la-la-la, oh, when we presented for the high school data, I can't remember, but did we do a Barrington-to-Barrington comparison as well over the years? I know it was a while ago, I just can't remember.
Yeah, so that was in the fall when we presented the Illinois Report Card data, and I can't recall how many years we went back. We can pull that information.
Yeah, I think that'd be so helpful, again, you know, to look at the Barrington over the years data, if that isn't how it was presented. I just can't remember. And then my last question was, with the self-regulation in the SEL, I know I've mentioned this in prior discussions, but I think that the last time we saw this type of report, there was a further breakdown, and we talked about that in Barrington, you kind of looked at all of these kind of green circles, but then GRIIT out of self-regulation was the lowest. Do you, can you further break down the self-regulation? I see the average 4.1 number, but I would just be curious to see whether that trend continues or if it's been corrected. And, you know, I just think it'd be really interesting data to have.
That was Panorama data that you were looking at where they actually broke out GRIIT?
Okay.
The ECRAs survey doesn't break out.
It does not.
It does not.
So when does Panorama come back out again?
Well, Panorama is the, that's the assessment system that we used at that time, and then we switched to this one.
Oh, so there's no one-to-one comparison? So GRIIT is just included? So is there anything that kind of breaks out, like the number of questions in the survey that were related to GRIIT or no?
We do get some breakdowns at the item, it's kind of at the question level that we could probably share when we run the survey again.
Yeah, I would be curious about that.
But we won't get a GRIIT score, per se.
This is, these questions were purely related to this particular issue, understood? I don't know. I mean, to the extent that you can extract anything from that kind of, you know, those three, you know, big kind of bullet point headers, it would be interesting. Because I, that was just kind of that glaring, you know, one deficiency in the last time that we did this, so I'd like to see where it stands now. Awesome, thanks.
So my question might actually be for Dave Byung, who's not here, but hopefully you guys can add some input on that. And again, thank you, because this is very eye-opening and obviously concerning as we see some of the learning loss. And I still am very concerned about social-emotional learning. What's our status for next year with our ESER funds in terms of extra staff supports, both from social-emotional and academics? Are we going to be cutting back severely from this year? Are we going to have about the same supports? I'm just wondering, you know, what we can offer our students.
Yeah, I would say some of the positions that were used for social distancing, those have been pulled back upon. But support services, we've rolled all of those forward and continue to be able to use ESER funds for them. So those will continue on.
I'm glad to hear that. And is it just, you know, just one more year or can we expect maybe?
It is one more year.
Just one more year?
Yeah.
So we got to make the best use of our staff for this next year? Okay.
And some of the supports for social-emotional learning include the addition of board-certified behavior analysts within the Department of Student Services. So we were able to add one full-time position this school year, and we are adding an additional one next year. So there will be two BCBA's on staff district-wide to help with that emotional regulation and behavior piece, not only in special education settings, but in general education settings as well as needed. So that's a great support for students and staff.
And will that be K through 12 or just more K through eight?
Yes, it will be K through 12.
K through 12.
Yes. So we plan to have one BCBA assigned to special programs, such as the program Foundations at Countryside, SAS at Rose, and then another BCBA to help district-wide in all grade levels as needed.
Thank you, that's going to be also very helpful and important.
If we were to be able to obtain the comparative MAP analysis between districts that Angela and I were asking about, how, what's the timeframe? I know it takes a while to gather.
I would like to have some internal conversations first about what is possible and appropriate in sharing other districts' data, and then get back to you at a later date.
Okay.
There's also a possibility that something may come out from the state. The state actually did a survey that we participated in where they collected information about our local assessments, just averages. But, so that may come out in a state report, and if that's available, then we could give, we could kind of share that if it comes out. We don't know.
That would be great, yeah. Parents are always asking about, like, "How are we compared with other unit districts or other districts in our area?" And to point them there, some resources would be great.
So if you ever want to get on the advocacy side of this, consistent with Ohio, Illinois, the data exists that you, that the state could pull and extract data from these type of diagnostic assessments and meet the requirements of federal law. To add that additional test isn't necessarily... So that's something we would love to see, but I don't see happening anytime soon.
Yeah, because it's not required, right? So we don't have, right?
So I have a question. Thank you for doing this. This is helpful for everybody to know. The ECRAs, this is one snapshot of one semester of the ECRAs, right?
Fall and spring.
Fall, oh, this is fall and spring combined.
So the powder ring, that's lighter in color, that's the fall data, and then the darker circle is the spring data.
Gotcha, okay. And did we do ECRAs the year before, or was it just not really useful because it was pandemic or, I don't remember?
Someone speak who was here last year.
Which unfortunately would only be Ben.
We did it, I think we did it once last.
I know we had social-emotional data from last year.
Yeah, I can remember.
I defer to you a whole many times.
Because kids weren't in school, so some of the time, so it wasn't as easy to capture, I would think, like a lot of assessments.
We've done it a couple times. The season that we've done it has sort of shifted around a little bit.
Okay, okay. Because over time, it's interesting to know, like, are we improving? Are we having more issues? Are we addressing them? I'm sure, obviously, we all want to know those things.
Thank you.
You know, and if we're finding students, I don't, but that students are being identified and helped, right, is the main goal. And if we're getting better at that, I hope, and maybe there's more, hopefully there's not huge amounts more, you know, this is, yeah, to read the percentages, I guess gives me some of the answer, so. Are there specific things that you can explain to the community about how we're going to work with our students to help with, you know, I know you said there's a 3%, you know, factor on the scores, but it kind of looks like, you know, on the charts where they go diagonal, that the numbers are slightly lower, that things that we're going to do to address that, or is that in the planning process?
Yeah, so I think one of the things I said in the wrap-up was our focus on MTSS and our processes and procedures and working with the Illinois MTSS network to, please, the Illinois multi-tiered system of support, which was formerly RTI, Response to Intervention. So when we look at multi-tiered systems of support, we really want to ensure that we are supporting students both academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. So we have a matrix of supports in place for students on all ends of the spectrum. So Tier One is what we are doing for all students academically, behaviorally, and social-emotionally. Tier Two are the students who need something additional in addition to what the core is providing them. And so that is most likely, and in best practice, provided within the classroom setting. And then Tier Three is that additional layer of support where students are identified needing a deeper level of support, whether it's an academic intervention or a social emotional intervention. So we're really wanting to prevent the need for something like special education services. So specifically to your question, as it relates to social-emotional learning and our ESER supports with, for example, our wellness counselors at the middle school, they are specifically placed to be supporting students socially, emotionally, to help support them in their journey. Our MTSS coaches at the high school are specifically designed to do this. As Jordan stated, the ISB, Illinois State Board of Education, adopted standards in 2005 saying that we are expected to teach social-emotional learning skills, which are related to the five CASL core competencies into our core curriculum. So over time, as we refine our processes and procedures, you will see this embedded and already see it in many cases in our core curriculum. When we get data like this, whether it's from the handover data that was shared with you in February, or the ECRAs data that's being presented to you tonight, we are intentionally working with our problem-solving teams at each of our buildings and with our principals to share that data with them so they're able to see students who have a need, and every child and staff member, for that matter, who identifies as needing support, are getting the support that they need.
It's really hot in here, and it's a little bit late at night, and it's super, super important that every student is being assessed and recognized and getting what they need. So that's really, really good.
Your breakdown of the tiers was very helpful, too. So thank you.
On that same thread, then, for academics, are we doing the same kind of assessment at each level to say, "Okay, we know we were six points behind where we were, so we're working with the eighth-grade teachers to see if they can assess what they missed the year prior?"
Yeah, absolutely. So at this point, all of the principals have been met with, and Ben is going around to the buildings throughout the district to meet with their problem-solving teams, their leadership teams, to disaggregate, because what you're seeing is the district-level data. So we're in the process of disaggregating the building-level data so that we can plan for things like school improvement and getting ready to identify students for intervention so we can hit the ground running in the fall to ensure that all students are supported appropriately and are growing and excelling appropriately.
And that, that, those are the meaningful conversations when you disaggregate the data and are working with those teams and they identify, is it a curriculum gap that maybe we missed something? Is it a teaching and learning and how we taught it? And those are the powerful conversations that happen, those meanings that, you know, lead to productive change. But it starts with the data, understanding the data, and then making it actionable. You're seeing it at a very high level.
Right.
Kind of on the result side of things, but at the turning, you know, point of instruction place, it's, it's those productive conversations that make a difference.
And one more minor comment from you, when you show the, the charts, you know, and you individualize some of these things, keep the color the same.
Thank you for that feedback.
Minor, minor.
To show the difference in the cohorts, so your eyes focus on one gray level.
Right, but like, it was like a different color. It was gray here, and it was gray, it was, but a different cohort was blue or something like that. It wasn't gray and gray, it was gray and blue. Minor, your next one.
I have to say, just to get back on what you brought up, if, if we assume, and, and I don't think this is a big assumption, that there was learning loss and social emotional effects from COVID, I think it's going to take more than a year to make up for what happened. I'm not making excuses, but the fact that we're not where we were two years ago says a lot that we have work to do.
Yeah, and when we...
I applaud you guys doing that.
And when we really look at all the articles that are coming out about learning acceleration, and that's why I really like using that term, is, they say it will take about three to five years to ensure that we are accelerating learning, because what, another thing I like about learning acceleration is that it doesn't allow for a deficit mindset, because if we focus on learning loss too much, we're going to focus on what do students not have versus what do students have and fill in the gaps appropriately so we can move them forward and expect that they're meeting grade-level standards and beyond.
You also follow up with us on those actionable steps, like how the data actually translates into, into work, just so we can kind of see the, the thread and how it plays out in our buildings, too.
One very firm example I can give you all tonight is last week, we had our Teaching and Learning Retreat, one of two this summer, and we looked at every single piece of raw data that is available for student achievement and growth in, in the spring so that we could, one, help prepare this presentation for you today, but start to truly take a, a deep dive in how we can support our buildings and building data literacy throughout our district so that our teachers can be, using data, like I said, to inform their instruction, because as Dr. Hunt said, that's really where the meat of all of this work is. We can look at national norms and our district-level data, but we really have to be using our student-level data, our building-level data, to inform instruction on a day-to-day basis, and our teachers are doing a great job of that, and we can take that a step further and ensure that we are supporting them in doing so by facilitating data dives at the district level, at the building level, so that principals can be appropriately facilitating data dives with their problem-solving teams.
The data, you know, we, we talked about this with Dr. Winkelman, working with principals, that this data is part of vision cycles and building goals and the conversations at, you know, school improvement at, at that level as well.
I think, just like, I think this is good for kids to see, I mean, in mine personally, who, they, they know that they're behind where they should be, or, and, but we've been just saying, oh, but we're better than the national average, brother, and I honestly, like, I think it's good to acknowledge that, yeah, you might need more help, and we do have to fill in the gaps and stuff, so I really like seeing this because I think it's good to acknowledge where kids are going to need a little bit more help. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt, for leading us as well. It's awesome, I mean, not awesome, it's good.
It's good to have information.
Good to have it, it's awesome.
I'd like to thank this team, but I, I'd like to draw Jordan Anderson's, just point out, she's really stepped up over the last couple of months on the people services side to help us through the year. We're excited to see you on the Teaching and Learning Team, but we appreciate everything Sharon and Jordan did the last couple of months, so just wanted to publicly thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that pause, thank you.
All right, and if you're tired, we have one more exciting rollout and unveiling.
Yes, unveiling. Looks good, let's go.
Promise I'll go quick.
I trust you, you usually can.
With faded brush, so excited to see this.
It's going to be all pictures of the Board of Education.
We actually need a few more.
Standing uncomfortably around an unwitting child.
Angela, you're always at the back, you know it.
So I'm going to turn it over to Sam here in a minute, but if anyone's ever been through a website redesign, it is no small feat. It's just a tremendous amount of work that happens, all in her office, making connections throughout the district, going everywhere our website goes, and trying to roll it over, and, and I think at the end of the day, we've got something that's very visually appealing and also, you know, in terms of our ability to navigate, will improve the experience for our parents, which is obviously critically important as well. So wanted to thank you for being here, and let you, let you walk us through.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt, and thank you guys for the opportunity to provide you with a sneak peek of our website. Before I give you a tour of sort of the high-level features on the homepage, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about this project. So our current website on the left here is with a company called Blackboard, formerly known as SchoolWires. We've been with this company, as far as I can tell, since 2012, so for about 10 years now. We did do a refresh back during the 2015, 2016 school year, for those of you who remember when we rebranded and launched our new logos for the schools and the district. We refreshed the website. And then a year after I started, in the summer of 2018, we did another refresh, sort of changed the layout just a little bit and added some new features. We've done a few things since then, but really, over the past four years, we have not had any major updates to our website, which is a really long time in the website world, as some of you may know. So our current website is with a company called Final Site. The company has been around since 1999, and it serves public school districts, private schools across the country, thousands of schools across the country as well as internationally. It also serves higher education institutions, their websites as well. So as we started this project, we had four primary goals in mind. Of course, when you update a website, you want to have a modern, updated, fresh look. We also wanted to improve the organization of our website. As you guys have probably seen when you've been on our website, I'm not saying it's horrible or anything like that, but it is very hard to sort of navigate, things are hard to find, there's a lot going on there, so we wanted to improve all of that. Of course, making a more mobile-friendly design, we know through our Google Analytics that about half, 47% of the visitors to our site are using their cellphones when they're looking at our site, so it's important to create a mobile-friendly design. And then lastly, improving ADA accessibility, so making it easier, for instance, for people who use screen readers to process the information to look at our website. So in order to achieve these goals, we, this past school year, we collected a lot of feedback. We held a lot of different meetings with building staff, we met with all the principals. At some of those meetings, we met with admin assistants as well, LTA's, library technology assistants to get their feedback. We met with staff who are involved with some of our special programs, for instance, fine arts. We met several times with Bridget Tileston to create a district fine arts page, which we did not, we don't currently have on our website, as well as to revamp the VHS fine arts page. We also met with our librarians who use, we know use the website a lot. We met with our PTO presidents during PTO President's Council to get that parent perspective and feedback about the website. We also, and when I say we, I'm talking about myself and Annie Louiezy, she's the other half of the Communications Department, some of you know her, she also worked really hard on this website. We met with each of the exec council members to figure out their department pages and some more feedback that they had on the website. And then we also ran a few ideas by area communications professionals. I meet with a group of parents in the district who are also have a strong communications background, I meet with them a couple times a year, and they also provided ideas. So we had all that feedback from this past year, but we've really been looking into this for the past five years. We've known for a while that we were going to do this, we've talked to parents through the years, we've talked to staff members through the years, and all of that feedback was very invaluable when we went about designing the site. So with that, we're going to take a little tour.
When does this go live again?
Tomorrow.
Oh.
You can explore tomorrow. All right, so this is the homepage for the district, and I'm just going to kind of go through some things to show you at a high level, some of the features. So starting at the upper right-hand corner of the screen, we have our search bar, so if you wanted to search for any information, just type that in, and then you can see what comes up. Next to the search feature, we have our translation button, and these are the top six languages that are spoken among our Barrington 220 households. We have English, Spanish, Polish, Mandarin Chinese, Urdu, and forgive me if I'm mispronouncing this, but Bujurati, I think is how you pronounce it. So if you just click these, I'll click the Spanish one, you'll see it'll change and automatically translate the content. So we'll go back to English. We have our, a link to our employment site for prospective employees, lunch menus, Infinite Campus, District Calendar, these are all highly visited pages on our website, we know that through analyzing our Google Analytics. And then if we go to the lower menu here, our main menus, we've got our district, this is where our Board of Education page is located. Take a sneak peek, make photos, and then if you go down.
Take your photo.
At least they're all uniform now, you know? We've got our schools, we rearranged how the schools are to do it by level rather than alphabetical order, because if you think about someone who's coming into the district who doesn't know, you know, what level each school is at, now they're at elementary, middle, and high school and beyond, that's how they're organized. We have our departments tab, information for families, parents, and students, staff, and then if you click on our directory, a new feature here compared to our whole photo site. Yes, it allows us to pair pictures, the yearbook photos with the directory, so I think this will help a lot in, you know, matching a name with a face for our community members and even staff members. And you can filter that by name, first name, last name, location, departments. Going back to the homepage, we heard a lot about the calendar from people, how that needs to be up in front, and our, on our current website, it's currently below, this is called below the fold when you have to scroll, so we made sure that it was right there so that people could see it, and you can scroll up and down to see different events. We have our rotating headlines, which have the latest news going on in the district, and you can click on each to read more. And then on the right here, we have what's called two sticky buttons, so that means that any page you go to on the website, you will find these two buttons right here on the side. So the first one is our See Something, Say Something button, if you click that, you go to our See Something, Say Something page where you can report a concern, we felt that that was important to keep front and center on every page. And then the other button is our 220 Initiatives button, so you can find out more information about Bill 220, Equity 220, Framework 220, Safety 220. And then we'll go back to the homepage. So if you go down, this section right here will be sort of where we announce our theme for the upcoming school year, so last school year, our theme was See the Students, so we have a little kind of question mark teaser there right now because we haven't announced it. Here we've got our superintendent section, where you can learn more about Dr. Hunt, if you click there, it'll take you to his superintendent page. And then we have our Innovation 220 section, where if you click there, it'll take you to some of our innovative programs in the district, where you can learn more about all of those programs. Almost done. If we move down, we have our social media section, so if you click on the Twitter icon, you can see our latest tweets, Facebook, Instagram. And then the last section here is sort of like a testimonial section, we have different quotes from students, staff, we've got one from our board president here as well, just about the strength of our district. So that is, and then here's the mission at the bottom, which will obviously change after tonight. That is the main, the website in a nutshell. One other thing really quickly I do want to point out, on the elementary and middle school pages, just to differentiate them, we did kind of go with this, you can see on the calendar and the logo up here, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fuller, for helping with the logo. We added this sort of Crayola look to the elementary pages, as well as these Crayola sort of designs here, just to jazz it up a little bit. And then at the middle school level, we did something similar, but we did it as a colored pencil look, because obviously Crayola, so here, you can see it looks more like a colored pencil and then some different sort of, just little symbols here. So this goes live tomorrow, if you come back to our website in the afternoon, it should be up, there will be a little pop-up message with a video that explains and welcomes people to the new site, and if you have any questions.
How do you go to policy? It'll be easier.
It, it's hard to find on the current website.
Search, search.
It's under board, right? Do you really want me to go to it?
Yeah.
Oh, it's under board, okay.
Go board, there we go.
Okay, that's a perfect meeting.
Is a manual there, too?
That's who we're talking about, yeah.
It is the manual. Awesome, thanks, Sam, that is...
And you got it done with that?
Beautiful.
It looks really great. I, I have to Google things all the time currently to like find things, so hoping I'll just...
Search is supposed to work better than our current search feature, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Did you have to wireframe everything in your office, too, with the?
What?
Did you have to do all like the wireframes, like the mapping and stuff, website mapping?
Oh, well, we did it digitally.
It's a lot of work.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so next up is agenda items for July 12th. I would like to add one with respect to our October meeting. We had given feedback before about teaching vacancies, currently on a religious holiday, and we had about 50, it was the same, didn't matter if we moved the date or not, it was the same number of people that could attend, but I'd like to put that on our agenda, so it's on, on that, on that holiday, and we'll decide at our next meeting if that's okay to add to July, just so we've got time to make that change. And then with respect to our earlier discussion, I'm not sure, Dr. Hunt, if you'll be ready to talk about fifth grade or not? It was a request that was made earlier, right?
Yeah, we, we are prepared to bring that as a discussion item.
Okay, and then are we also prepared to, I don't even know what to call it, a curriculum discussion, or?
Regarding?
Regarding... Books and library?
I, I do not think this specific book in this challenge or this...
Oh, I didn't, yeah, I didn't, I don't mean the specific book.
So I'd like that process to work out, or go through, and we can bring it to a future meeting.
At that same time, can we perhaps review how we review?
Yes.
Because I have gone back and I've got a lot of questions on it now that I'm reading through it again. Thank you. Thank you.
Because the fifth grade video's gonna be a discussion item, is there a way to view the video? I never saw it because our son was, that was COVID year.
There's a link on the, I mean, well, it'll be new. I could send it to you though. There's the whole fifth grade.
Oh, yeah. Could you share that with us, too?
I'll put it in the weekly.
It's in that we're also preparing a memo to go along with the presentation and it's already, it's, I would say, 98% done and the video is included in the memo.
Included, okay. Great. Thank you.
I should say the instructional unit is included in the memo and the video part of the instructional review.
Got it.
And we already have on the agenda the second reading of Board Policy we did tonight. I'm sorry.
Preliminary budget.
Preliminary budget.
Potential resolution regarding change of street.
Right, okay. Okay, anything else?
Dr. Hunt, thank you again for having the team put together the honors class, honors class schedule for the last several years. That's really helpful. Does it make sense, or I guess, will this schedule be shifted to public content? Or should, or does it make more sense for us to have a discussion about this, to kind of present this to the community? Do you have any suggestions? Because I do have a couple of questions that we can certainly talk about, but I'm thinking it'd be good to get this out for more than just the Board of Education.
It is public, it is public content. It's all available on the website.
Not consolidated like this, is it?
Oh, no, no, you'd have to go and see.
Right, that's what I mean. So this is, I'm just referring to a specific document.
Oh, it's not a link on Open Session?
Well, this was sent during the weekly.
Yeah, we could put as a link, I would think.
So, yeah, that's one question or request. And the other being Senate Bill 818, does it make sense for us to put that on the agenda for next time? Just as a discussion matter for how the process will work?
There's really not much to discuss. The Policy Committee did not act on Senate Bill 818 recommendation. The reason was the standards haven't been released by Illinois School Board Association. And the decision from the Policy Committee was, we'd like to see those standards prior to making any decision and recommendation to the Board. Implementation, people that are, you know, talked about, worried about, you know, making a decision for this school year, we would not implement those standards this year, even if we were to adopt them.
Okay, that's good to know.
We would bring that, any proposed changes to the Board, present them to the Board and they would be implemented a year later.
So in the 2023-2024 school year.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think it's important to make the distinction that Senate Bill 818, which is the Keeping Students Safe and Healthy Act, which is actually a revision of the Student Protection Privacy Act. And while that law is currently in place, it very clearly outlines specific steps that the state, the Illinois State Board of Education will take. And one of those is that the State Board of Education will design state standards that are aligned to the national standards. And if and when they release those standards, then the next step would be for a local school district to, A, look at that policy to determine if it's a policy in which they wish to adopt. And second, the school district specifically has the autonomy to take a look at the state standards to align them with our school district standards. So they may, if we, if the school district chooses to move forward with those, we would have the autonomy to further revise them.
That would be ongoing through the course of this year.
Okay, that's really helpful, Sam.
Guidance was supposed to be released August 1st, correct?
Do we have a legislative tab on the website?
Maybe get married first and then focus on.
So just to be clear, the standards are coming in August. Our district isn't changing any curriculum for the fall.
That's correct.
So just so the public is clear, there's no reason to be concerned because we're not changing anything for the fall, no matter what.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's helpful to know.
Just so people know.
Good point, Leah.
Right.
But some of the concern is that we did change part of our fifth grade curriculum and that's what some people would like addressed, too. That actually already happened. The way that we teach it.
The delivery of the.
Right, right.
But yes, I appreciate that you're.
Yeah, because people tonight sound like they're worried something's gonna happen in the fall. It isn't, as far as curriculum.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to help people understand, because that, I like people to know what the correct information is.
Excellent. Thanks, Dr. Hunt. That's very helpful.
Do we have a motion to approve the confidentiality of closed session minutes?
Second.
Roque?
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?